September twenty first, twenty twenty Troy City Council meeting, I will call the meeting to order and ask for the vote on this Dixon.
Mayor Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Abraham.
Here.
Councilmember Brooks.
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Erickson Gault.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Here.
All present this evening, first on the agenda is certificates of recognition and special presentations. We have four of them this evening. First is C one, a proclamation and recognition of Kaori Marikawa for donating her time and talents to her community during COVID nineteen, the COVID nineteen pandemic. I had the pleasure of presenting this proclamation in person to Kaori just the other day. And she was very, very grateful to receive this in person. So I'm going to read this into the record. It's a proclamation recognition of Kaori Marikawa. Whereas on March eleventh, twenty twenty, Michigan Governor Gretchen Whitmer declared a state of emergency and issued several orders implementing measures in the state of Michigan that were designed to help prevent the rapid serious illness or death. And whereas on March twenty third, twenty twenty, Governor Gretchen Whitmer issued executive order twenty twenty dash twenty one, which temporarily suspended all activities not necessary to sustain or protect life, the stay home, stay safe order, making life very challenging and different from what everyone had been used to. And whereas during these challenging and uncertain times, our Troy community continues to practice social distancing and residents have been looking out for one another and rallying around one another during this time of need. And whereas one of Troy's residents, eighteen year old Kaori Marikawa, felt that because of COVID, most of her neighbors who are older adults hadn't been able to see their children and grandchildren like they used to, making everyone very sad and lonely and the neighborhood very quiet and depressed. And whereas Kaori began playing the violin when she was six years old and loved it from the very first note. Since school was closed, part of Kaori's daily schedule was to practice violin for two hours a day. And with the windows open, neighbors started coming to her family's yard to listen to her music whenever she would practice. Some neighbors suggested she play more often outside or on the lake so they could listen. And one neighbor even offered a boat. And whereas as her mom Yoko Marikawa peddled the boat, Kaori played her own renditions of the Star Spangled Banner, Scotland the Brave, Amazing Grace, and My Heart Will Go On, as well as classics such as Vivaldi's The Four Seasons, treating her neighbors to their own personal violin concerts. Starting at Pebble Lake where she lives, Kaori has now expanded her concerts to the other five lakes within her subdivision. And whereas Kaori also works very hard in her studies, this year she received the AP Scholar Award for achieving high scores on five AP exams. And in twenty eighteen, she was an intern at the United Nations Headquarters in New York City, working for a foreign diplomat. Kaori hopes to get into Harvard next year. Now therefore be it resolved that the Troy City Council extends special recognition to Troy President Kaori Marikawa for dedicating her time, talent, and love of the violin to bring smiles and happiness to her community by playing the violin on the many lakes within the Emerald Lake subdivision. And be it further resolved that the Troy City Council and all of Troy's residents sincerely thank Kaori Marikawa for being a shining example of how to give back to one's community. This proclamation was presented in person a couple of days ago and presented into the record today, the twenty first day of September twenty twenty. Okay. Next on the agenda is C two, it's a service commendation to the Troy Historic Village Executive Director Lorraine Campbell. I will read this into the record as well. Whereas Lorraine Campbell began her career with the city of Troy in nineteen seventy six as an interpretive naturalist of the Stage Nature Center. She became an education coordinator in nineteen ninety eight and was promoted to executive director of the Troy Historic Village in two thousand. And whereas Lorraine oversaw the daily operation and administration of eleven historic structures and a collection of over eight thousand items on local and regional history. She supervised seven employees and one hundred and eighty volunteers with interpretive programs servicing twenty six thousand plus guests annually. And whereas Lorraine has a Master of Arts degree in history, a certificate in archive management, and a Bachelor of Science in Biology from Wayne State University. She is the author of A Pocketful of Passage, the editor of Troy, A City From the Corners, and co-author of Fire Calls and Station Stories. And whereas Lorraine has served on the Michigan Museum Association Board of Directors, two thousand and eleven to present, the planning committee for the Michigan Local History Conference, two thousand and seven to two thousand and sixteen, and a member of the Troy Kiwanis Club. She was an adjunct professor LIS at Wayne State University from two thousand and nine to two thousand and fifteen, and an adjunct professor, College of Arts and Science at Oakland University in two thousand and seventeen. And whereas Lorraine will officially retire from the Troy Historic Village on September twenty eighth, twenty twenty, after twenty years of dedicated service and the utmost respect from the city of Troy, the Troy Historical Society, Troy Historic Village employees and volunteers, and countless residents she has met during her career with the city of Troy and the Troy Historic Village. Together with Lorraine's leadership, the Troy Historic Village has expanded its resources and is now recognized as an outstanding center for history and culture. Whereas Lorraine will now enjoy more time with her daughters, Emily Berzowski and Marie Kappenman, sons-in-law Terrace Berzowski and Justin Kappenman, and grandchildren Max and Alexander Berzowski and Una, Emmett, and Deacon Kappenman. Lorraine will also spend a lot of quality time with her parents Madonna and Joseph Kilowalt, as well as birding, gardening, exploring nature, and traveling. Now therefore be it known that the mayor and city council of the city of Troy take this opportunity to express their appreciation to Lorraine Campbell for her professionalism and her many contributions to the city of Troy and the Troy Historic Village for the betterment of the community. And be it further known that the mayor and city council of the city of Troy, city management, and the citizens of the city of Troy extend wishes of prosperity, good health, and happiness to Lorraine during her retirement years. This proclamation or service commendation is presented the twenty first day of September twenty twenty. Thank you, Lorraine, for your service to our city and community, and you will certainly be missed. I know we spoke a little bit about it at the last meeting, but you are very much in our hearts as you move forward into this new chapter. And we look forward to celebrating at the village with the now's Barnard House opening. I'm sure you'll be there for the grand opening, but you'll have to come back for that. So look forward to seeing you there. But thank you for everything you've done for our city. Next on the agenda is C three, a proclamation for Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, September twenty twenty. And I will read that into the record as well. Whereas childhood cancer is the number one cause of death from disease among children. Every day, forty-three children in the United States are diagnosed with cancer, and the average age of diagnosis is just six years old. One in two hundred and eighty-five children will be diagnosed with cancer before the age of twenty and around the world. One child every two minutes is diagnosed with cancer. Approximately eleven thousand fifty children and adolescents under fifteen years of age will be diagnosed with cancer in twenty twenty in the United States. And whereas one in every one thousand eighteen-year-olds in the United States is a survivor of childhood cancer as a result of overall cure rates that have risen to more than eighty percent over the past forty years. Only four percent of federal government cancer research funding goes to childhood cancer research. And whereas lifelong follow-up care is recommended for all childhood cancer survivors due to the possibility of late side effects associated with treatment. And whereas the impact of a childhood cancer diagnosis produces multiple challenges to a family. Children and their families needed and deserve the full support of their communities while undergoing treatment. And whereas survival rates for pediatric cancers have improved dramatically over the past fifty years. Today, innovative treatments such as proton therapy and molecularly targeted therapy give doctors even more tools to fight and win the battle against childhood cancers while working to reduce side effects from treatments. And whereas proton therapy can be especially beneficial for young cancer patients who are most vulnerable to side effects of traditional radiation therapy. Belmont Hospital Royal Oak was the first hospital in Michigan treating pediatric patients with proton technology. And whereas our community has the opportunity to make a difference, make a significant impact on the lives of children currently being treated for cancer, childhood cancer survivors and their families. And now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Troy hereby proclaim September twenty twenty as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Troy and joins with our local hospitals to honor all childhood cancer survivors for their strength and their determination. And be it further resolved that the city council of the city of Troy applaud the hardworking doctors, nurses, and staff at Troy's local hospitals who dedicate their lives caring for children affected by cancer. This is presented the twenty first day of September twenty twenty. We present that proclamation each year, and usually we're doing it in person and giving it to some of the doctors that have made a real difference in our community. So I'd be remiss if I didn't mention them, and it's always an honor and pleasure to have them there and to share in their genius for what they've done for our children. So thank you also for the work you've done. Next on the agenda is C four, it's a proclamation honoring Welcome Week, making Welcome Week in Troy, Michigan for September twelfth to the twentieth in twenty twenty. Whereas the city of Troy has long considered itself a city of immigrants and thrives to be welcoming and inclusive as a municipality for all residents to live, work, learn, and play. And whereas the city of Troy recognizes how immigrants contribute to a strong regional economy and a diverse vibrant community. And whereas according to the U.S. Census Bureau, Troy is a city with the second largest percentage of foreign-born residents in Metro Detroit. The city of Troy is proud of our many immigrants who call this community home and appreciate their valuable contributions in building and enriching our nation and city. And whereas the city of Troy recognizes the contribution of all individuals to create a vibrant culture, future-ready workforce, and a growing economy to make Oakland County and the southeast Michigan region more prosperous and more inclusive for all who call it home. And whereas the twenty twenty theme for Welcome Week is creating home together, which is particularly poignant this year as we all struggle to define what home means to us under increasing COVID nineteen restrictions and deepening local divides. And whereas the city of Troy recognized September twelfth through the twentieth, twenty twenty as Welcome Week, a nationwide call for all to come together and celebrate and leverage our differences and to build a vibrant and connected community where every resident has the opportunity to contribute, thrive, and have a sense of belonging regardless of immigration status, race, ethnicity, place or origin, gender, sexual orientation, religion, income, age, or other factors. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Troy is hereby proclaim September twelfth through the twentieth, twenty twenty as Welcome Week in the city of Troy and has urged all citizens to join us in recognizing that week to celebrate our differences. And be it further resolved that the city council urges all government agencies, organizations, schools, places of worship, and individuals in our city to commemorate Welcome Week as a time to come together to celebrate the wonderful things that each of our different cultures and backgrounds bring to this community. The city of Troy is pleased to join in the celebration with other communities all over America. This was signed last week, the fourteenth day of September twenty twenty, presented today, the twenty first day of September twenty twenty. I'm telling you, proclamations aren't as strong when we're not giving them to people at a podium, but we make them work. It's good that the information gets read into the record. All right, so that concludes the C's, Proclamations and Special Presentations. There are no carryover items this evening. There are no public hearings this evening, so that takes us to public comment. It's my understanding that we have substantial public comment this evening, and that falls upon City Clerk Ailing Dixon to either read emails into the record or to play the voicemails that were received today or up until today. It's also my understanding that there were a small handful of emails and maybe a voicemail or two that came in after the four o'clock deadline today. Based on a conversation with the city attorney, it's recommended that we, can we do it with consensus to allow that, or do we need to? If we can provide consensus to allow those little bit late public commenters to be allowed in for the most transparency and for the good of community. Is there consensus for that? Looks like I see thumbs and nodding heads. And as a reminder, so long as we're meeting virtually, public comment can be submitted either via email to publiccomment@troymi.gov or via voicemail at two four eight five two four three three zero two. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to City Clerk Dixon, who has a big job coming up.
Thank you, Mayor. We have over seventy emails to read, so I'm just gonna try to get through them as quickly as possible. Comment one is from Cynthia Green. I strongly support keeping the Troy Family Aquatic Center open. My family has enjoyed many years being members. Three of my adult children have recently purchased homes in Troy. One reason is the aquatic center. It is an asset to the city and young families that choose Troy. Please keep it open. Comment two from Manisha Bajwa. I have a concern with the repairs being made this fall leading to additional open time for the pool and extra cost. Hopefully the repairs can be scheduled for the springtime. Comment three from Michelle Malzik. I want to share some comments regarding the Troy Aquatic Center. I grew up in Troy and can remember going to the opening day of the Aquatic Center. As a kid, I loved going there almost every day. Later I moved to Arizona but returned to Troy about five years ago. One of the reasons we chose Troy was because of the community center, parks, and aquatic center. We have so many families with small children that can benefit from a community aquatic center. I would be willing to pay a higher membership rate just to keep the center open. If we are going to attract families, we need to offer amenities such as this. Comment four, Alice from Allison Case. My name is Allison Case. My husband Anthony and I just moved to Troy in April with our daughter Savannah. We have another child on the way. We lived in Claussen in a small bungalow for seven years before beginning the search for our forever home. When we began this search, we were looking all over Oakland County. I work in Farmington and my husband works in Southfield. My husband is pursuing PhD programs near Ann Arbor, so when it came time to search for homes, we were across the map. We searched for homes in Rochester Commerce, Saline, Lake Orion, Wixom, South Lyon, and more, before we eventually decided to move just twenty minutes northeast of our beloved Claussen home to the wonderful community of Troy. Both my husband and I are in education, so the immediate draw to Troy was its excellent school system. However, the deciding factor, I kid you not, was the Troy Family Aquatic Center. We searched in so many cities for something that even resembled a community pool, and literally none of them provided a service like the TFAK provided. Living in Claussen, we had purchased a family membership to the TFAK in two thousand and nineteen, and we spent the entire summer there. For us as new parents, having somewhere so fun and so close by to take our then-one-year-old was a godsend. And now the thought of raising our growing family in a city with a community pool was just too beautiful a thought to pass up. It wasn't just a pool for us, it was a sense of community, one that we had not seen in any of the other areas we looked in. I know budget concerns are real. Again, being an educator, I see this firsthand, but I urge you to consider other means of increasing revenue for the TFAK before closing its doors. I would be willing to bet that many families, ours included, would pay more for a membership if it meant we could have a local place to take our kids in the summer that would build unforgettable memories. Thank you for your consideration in this matter. I hope I can see you at the pool again very soon. Comment five from Thomas Templin. The quality of life in Troy from families with children would be greatly diminished without an aquatic center. Families without children, or if the children are all grown up, don't need or can do without a facility like this. Can't tell you how much this has meant to us over the years. Comment six from John, a concerned citizen. Hello, to whom it may concern, I've basically lived in Troy my whole life in the suburb of John R. and Waddles and Dequinder and Sixteen Mile, and I've noticed over the years that there used to be three separate forests in that neighborhood. And since around two thousand and ten, all have been torn down and turned into housing. Troy makes me really mad that they would rather have taxable income than nice lush green forests. Can someone please put an end to this practice? I've noticed that the richer side of Troy, where most likely all the rich city council members live, has vast stretches of forests. Dare I say, drive up John R. between Nineteen Mile heading north to Twenty Mile on the west side, there is a massive forest. It makes me angry that Troy has torn down so many forests, and most recently, they tore down the forest over at John R. and Waddles about two to three years ago. I'd really appreciate a response that could rationalize this behavior and the choices that the city council has made. To me, it is complete ignorance and utter lack of morals to clear cut some of the last forests in Troy to build ugly houses that all look the same and have backyards that aren't even a sixteenth of an acre. I'd really appreciate a response. Comment seven from Catherine Christie. I was very saddened to hear about the potential closure of the Troy outdoor pool. We spent many summer days when our kids were small enjoying the pool. I understand that the maintenance is very costly, but the money is already there for use. I can't imagine the attention was ever for the pool to be a big profit center. Hopefully the intention was another reason to have a good quality of life in the city of Troy. Comment eight from Lisa Cranfield. My family and I were very distressed to learn the city is even considering getting rid of the summer aquatic center. We've enjoyed the center every single summer with family passes. There is nothing better than heading over to the pool to spend the Saturday or heading over during the week for a break after work with the kids. I can tell you firsthand the sadness we felt this summer when you chose not to open. We truly missed it every single day. It has always been a source of amazing memories for our family as well as many others. As a side note, I am absolutely perplexed as to why the city is thinking of getting rid of it. I truly hope they aren't trying to drive families out of Troy. If not, then why? To what add, to what? Add more restaurants, maybe another four-story iSource storage facility, electronic billboards, maybe a mammoth parking structure, or God knows what? They tried to get rid of the pool before when they were pushing their walkable downtown and got shut down for it. Is this just another way to get rid of it? What does the board have against family activities? It's hard to deny there's a problem when the residents have to fight tooth and nail to keep the city from destroying parks and green space. The city has already eliminated so much green space. I can't believe they think it would be a good idea to take away another family-oriented service. Troy has everything a family could ever want, and eliminating the pool would take away from that without a doubt. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate to contact me. Comment nine from John Gunnels. As a new Troy resident arrived in twenty seventeen, I am saddened to see that the aquatic center may be closed and wanted to provide my feedback. I first want to thank Mayor Baker and City Council for allowing the public comment and supporting citizens' rights to speak up. It is clear that the financial future of the pool is murky, particularly with the unknown ability to run the pool in twenty twenty one. However, I would hate for us to lose the pool without having a future plan in place. If the pool was not to open in twenty twenty one, realistically, we would be without an aquatic center or even a splash pad for many years as that takes time to develop. Many Troy families with children would never be able to utilize the facilities as it would pass them by. I do understand that this is not what a modern facility looks like, but we are one of a few communities that has the great aquatic center. If Southfield and Madison Heights can do it, why not us? I'd certainly feel more comfortable with moving on from the aquatic center if we were able to transition to a new facility or had a plan in place. But I'm afraid that the financial commitment will be too high, and ten years from now, we won't even have a solution. I'd love to be a part of a solution and would offer my time to help organize or brainstorm efforts to help preserve or plan for the future so our families can have an aquatic center where they can swim and not just run through a splash pad. Whether it be through fundraising, corporate donations, alternative revenue streams, or something else, I'd love for us to exhaust our options before moving on. Furthermore, I'm hopeful that through mask mandates, children will be able to use the facility next year. I encourage the city council to attack this issue with the immediate problem at hand. Let's encourage the contractor to help make repairs this year so the pool can open in twenty twenty one. And let's plan now for how we can do that safely with masks for above water and on land and social distancing. I know we can do it. From there, we can ideate around how to create additional revenue streams by promoting the pool to residents and non-residents alike. As a resident and a digital marketer, I will lend my time and expertise to help promote and push forward the aquatic center to make it viable until another solution is made. I encourage others to do the same and hope Mayor Baker and City Council will take me up on the offer. Twenty twenty has been rough, and we don't need any more bad news. This is something we can control. We have the brain power. We can figure out a solution. Let's get it done. Comment ten from Edmund and Axel Majerian. In these difficult times we live in, Troy residents have been extremely fortunate in having an outstanding library headed by our amazing Librarian of the Year, Director Kathy Russ. The services the library has provided during this pandemic closure have been phenomenal and a life-enriching process for all of us shut-ins, a desperately needed boost during isolation. Curbside delivery, easy drop-off, virtual and digital services of all kinds for all ages, availability of wide research material, not available to home computers, et cetera, even free Acorn TV for so many additional films, TV series that would normally require a paid subscription. Kathy Russ has provided it all together with her loyal and dedicated staff. She even made time for conversations with Kathy, Zoom session with author Michael Zadurian, a delightful hour. She has worked relentlessly and very, very successfully in giving us so much. We urge the city council to do their part in active and timely support of the needs of the library, fulfilling the necessary staffing needs so there is no shortage and negative impact for the opening of the library or the passage of the millage. Every week or month of delay in reopening the library may have harmful consequences in the minds of residents and the outcome of the upcoming votes. City council, please do your part. Do not let the Troy residents down. Comment eleven from Julia Janord. To whom it may concern, I have forwarded you. Oh, I'm sorry. From Julia Janord, good evening, Mayor Baker. My name is Julia Janord. Six years ago, you interviewed and hired me at Boland Park Middle School, mock interviews. I have enjoyed watching your career moves and political actions since then. I have been working at TFAK and TCC for four years as a lifeguard, swim instructor, and currently as one of the city of Troy's head lifeguards. TFAK has been an outstanding and deeply impactful place, recreation for myself, the rest of the staff, and the community as a whole. Nowhere else have I experienced the type of tight-knit family that TFAK has created for so many. I am reminded of a particular beautiful display of community at TFAK, Safety Day. On this day, the Troy summer camps, summer day camps, all came to be taught by the lifeguards how to be safe in the water. Unfortunately, there had been a miscommunication and the lifeguards were unprepared. Despite this, several coworkers and myself took all sixty-plus kids over to the pool and showed them how to rescue each other using our tubes. Afterwards, we began a game of Sharks and Minnows completely unprompted. Not only were the day camp kids involved, but the rest of the families in the pool and the off-duty lifeguards joined in for a facility-wide Sharks and Minnows game. By the end, everyone was laughing and had built new friendships with people that otherwise they would have only passed by. This sense of community is not uncommon for TFAK. In fact, it is expected when you walk in, you walk out at the end of the day with new memories, friends, and possibly a sunburn. Nowhere else in Troy can people connect this intimately. Please keep TFAK open so people do not lose their community. I have no doubt of the deep impact TFAK has had in my life. One of my college essays featured the intense community I feel there. My best memories are from TFAK, my best friends, my boyfriend, and many families I am now close with and even babysit for on occasion all came to me through TFAK. I have a younger brother who is only twelve now, but asks about when he gets to work for TFAK almost every month because of his experiences swimming there and the stories I've told him about working there. Please keep TFAK open so he and many others like him can have these experiences. Losing TFAK means losing out on community. I urge you to think of how badly we as a city will need to reunite with our neighbors and friends once quarantine is behind us. Please ensure that the one place this is truly possible is not taken away from us. Thank you for your time. I appreciate what you have done for the city, and I hope that you will continue to fight for what the city of Troy truly needs. Comment twelve from Christine Kelly. Mayor Baker, this email is in response to your recent Facebook post seeking comments regarding the Troy Family Aquatic Center. My family loves the aquatic center, and we use it often every summer, except this one, obviously. It is a common meeting place for us to get together with other Troy families during the summer. There is not anything like this near us that is as nice for families. The outdoor pool is a needed service in our city. Replacing it with a non-pool option would be very disappointing. If anything, it would be great if it were expanded and improved, more water slides, better changing facilities, and a smoother check-in system. My daughter was devastated when we learned that the aquatic center would not be open this summer due to COVID, although we understand and support the public health reasons behind this decision. Please do not permanently close this wonderful family facility. Comment thirteen from a Troy resident. As a resident who grew up in Troy, then purchased a home of my own in Troy, it's very sad to know that the aquatic center might not be there anymore. I have a family of six. I have been purchasing the membership for years. Please do not take away the one thing that kids can actually have fun with in our city. This is a gem in Troy. We have nothing else left in Troy. Consider adding a splash pad and other amenities to attract customers. Please make the updates and keep it. Comment fourteen from Matt Barker. Hi, my name is Matt, and I'm a Troy citizen. Please keep TFAK open at all costs. It is one of the biggest reasons my family moved to Troy fourteen years ago in two thousand and six. I'm a fourth-year lifeguard at TFAK, and it is an absolute pleasure going back there every summer. I would be extremely disappointed in my city government if they chose to not do the necessary repairs and have TFAK up and running summer twenty twenty one. The government should be willing to pay large amounts of money for a special place that increases the happiness and quality of life of its citizens. A large number of states allowed outdoor pools to open at fifty percent capacity in summer twenty twenty, and I think we should be able to do it in a safe manner too in summer twenty twenty one. Please keep TFAK open. Comment fifteen from Meg Katz. I'm a thirty-year resident of Troy who is highly in favor of keeping the aquatic center. My children and grandchildren and neighbors and their families cherish the facility. We have many past and recent fabulous memories. The center is well thought out in multiple areas and experiences for children and adults of all ages. Older me now uses the adult lap lanes for my exercise comfort due to joint problems in arthritis. The aquatic center enhances the appeal of living in Troy and for those seeking to move here. Our schools and library are also gems as well. I'm happy to pay more taxes or higher membership fees. I'm happy to support fundraiser or other money-making concepts for keeping the aquatic center. Thank you for reading my comments. Comment sixteen from Jill Beams. My husband and I are one of those who was raised in Troy and are now raising our family in Troy. There seems to be a handful of us. We have four children and are pleased with our schools and the services our city provides. We do use the aquatic center in the summer, purchasing a pass. If it doesn't remain as part We do use the Aquatic Center in the summer, purchasing a pass. If it doesn't remain as part of our city, we sure will miss it. Comment 17 from Kristen Beasley. My best friend told me that the Aquatic Center might close. Please vote to keep it open. It was some of my best childhood memories. I was planning on giving those exact memories to my young children throughout their childhood. Please fight to keep it open and to give us a chance to give that to my children. Comment 18 from Mary Lynn Bowen. I am writing to commend our amazing TPL Director Kathy Russ and her dedicated staff during the unsettling pandemic. TPL has worked above and beyond to provide us with curbside delivery, virtual programs, virtual book club discussions, information daily through social media, keeping us well informed. The children's library librarians provided many hands-on activities daily to help the young children and parents. Newsletters, staff picks, tech support, friendly service, links to all services, information regarding the upcoming millage have all been provided to Troy, to residents by the TPL staff to keep us well informed and our reading community strong. Director Kathy Russ and her staff have done so much hard work with a 50% staff shortage. We are very fortunate to have such a dedicated director and staff at TPL. I encourage all of you to acknowledge and commend our Michigan Librarian of the Year Kathy Russ for her hard-working, admirable staff. Troy residents need and deserve a great Troy Public Library. I look forward to the TPL reopening when it is safe and fully staffed for maximum efficiency. Thank you for your attention to Troy Public Library. Comment 19 is from a concerned citizen. I used to be a lifeguard at the Troy Family Aquatic Center, and I am not surprised that it has come to the point of considering to close the park. After working at TFAK for years, many of the lifeguards and managers knew that if the park was to stay open, some changes needed to happen. The aquatic managers of recreation consistently mismanaged the park because they were afraid of upsetting the public. Pricing desperately needs to be adjusted to compete with other parks, but patrons would vocally complain about the raise in price or ask for a refund due to rain, which is against the policy, and they would be given one anyways. The park was bleeding money for years. While I love the park as it was a cornerstone of my childhood and many formative, more formative years, costly changes would need to be made in order to ensure the future success of the park if it were to be kept open. The sand play area and volleyball courts should be removed as one, they don't offer much draw or attention to the park. And two, the sand gets into the pool, clogs the filter, and makes it appear dirty throughout the day, which is, which is unappealing to patrons. Instead, the sand areas should be replaced with another pool, say a wave pool or a lazy river. That would be a flashy new attraction to compete with Red Oaks, TFAK's biggest local competitor. Then the park could afford to raise prices as it would be offering a new attraction and adding value to the ticket price. If there were some way to fundraise for this, I think it would be a great strategy to consider. Simply keeping the pool open in its current state will surely lead to it being forced to close within the next five years. The only thing that could save the pool now would be the remodel I described. Comment 20 from Diana Williams. It's unfortunate that due to COVID's, due to COVID, Troy's Aquatic Center was closed, and the city decided to remain closed after outdoor pools were allowed to be open. This center is a jewel for our city and provides vital physical activity and a place for our community to gather. It adds value to living in Troy. The Aquatic Center should remain open for years to come. Certain, certainly there are options worth exploring to maintain the center. Certainly, there are viable solutions to raise funds if needed to continue offering this city jewel to keep Troy an ongoing attractive place to buy home and raise a family and/or reside. Comment 21 from Lisa Fairborn. I am personally in favor of keeping the Aquatic Center. I feel it is important to have community facilities available to residents. Comment 22 from Wallace Hinman. In response to the September 9th dated memo proposing closure of the Troy Family Aquatic Center, I'm at a loss for words, actually. As I read the memo, it shows that the funds to perform the necessary repairs outlined are available, and that is what they were supposed to be used for. So why aren't you doing so? Where is the discussion of alternative proposals? Or what has been investigated to facilitate keeping TFAK operational and viable? I would expect to see a complete business case study by an outside firm if necessary for a decision of this magnitude. But instead, it appears there has been very little thought put into considering solutions, and instead, the easiest path to close the facility is being taken. Shame on you. The Family Aquatic Center is one of the city's great features, and eliminating it will be robbing the community of a unique and much-loved asset. Our daughter was a lifeguard and swim instructor at TFAK through her high school years, and we took both our girls there as a fun activity when they were growing up. We are 20-plus-year residents of the city, and I cannot say strongly enough how disturbing and saddening I find this decision to be for our city and the surrounding extended community. Comment 23 from a Troy resident. Please don't close down for good. This is a reason we moved to Troy. Our family uses it every year. It's always busy, so I can't imagine it doesn't make money. We spend almost $300 for a membership. Please don't let our community down. We have, we don't have much around here like this. I don't want to go to Kensington when we want a nice splash pad. Comment 24 from Kristin Ottenweis. I urge you to please conduct the necessary repairs this fall that the TFAK requires so that it can be open, so that it can open next summer in 2021. My three children, ages 11, 9, and 6, love spending their summers at the pool, and our whole family was deeply saddened that it did not open. My son has autism, and the TFAK is one of his favorite places on earth. One of the reasons we moved to Troy in 2015 was because of the TFAK and the benefits swimming has for my son. I live, I live in Troy, and I ask you to please do whatever it takes to keep the TFAK open. These kids have lost so much during the COVID-19 pandemic, and to never get a chance to go to their favorite pool would be so sad. Comment 25 from Garrett Allen. I do not support the newly proposed Troy Library Millage of 1.1. During the majority of the past year, there had to have been cost savings due to the closure of the library. I also suggest that the use of our library is decreasing each year as access to the majority of information, once only found in a library, can now be found utilizing home computing devices. We have three school-aged children, and they have not needed the library in years. Comment 26. I come from a country of diversity, and Troy Public Library has been my favorite place ever since I landed in this country. When I am here to write a few words about our TPL, I think I won't feel enough when I have to explain this amazing place. My kids love it, too. My parents found it a great place when they visited us in 2018. It is so warm and welcoming. Books are my buddies, and TPL will always stay dear to me. Love volunteering here whenever I can dig out a valuable time, either for the Friends Store or the Gift Shop. Linda Lu and Brian have been incredibly great trainers and have many more names to feel friendly here. My intention has been, has always been being useful and give back to the community as this place has generously served people of Troy and surrounding areas, and will keep up the good work in the future, too. Lots of love for TPL. Comment 27 from Mario and Lorraine Scusso. My home is located just north of Firefighters Park, north of Square Lake, between Crooks and Coolidge. I'm contacting you regarding the very loud traffic noise in my community. The noise is terrible when they installed the wall on the south side of I-75 across from Firefighters Park. Now the traffic noise is captured by the south wall. It reverberates and heads north directly to my home and community. I was advised that MDOT did a noise study, but the north side of I-75 between Crooks and Coolidge across from Firefighters Park did not qualify for a wall. Obviously, MDOT did not include my community in the study. I would appreciate a copy of the results of that study. I would also request that the City Council members and MDOT officials come and sit on my deck for 10 minutes. My husband and I have lived in Troy for 20-plus years. We pay very high taxes in this community, and we would like to have this issue, this situation addressed. I would like to sell my house right now due to this problem, but I would likely have to take a loss due to the noise levels. I have been advised that there have been numerous complaints concerning this situation. Could you please provide the details of the complaints? Kindly advise the options available to me and my community to address this problem. Comment 28 from Todd Montry. I've been a resident of Troy since 1984. I would like to weigh in on the funding of the Aquatic Center. I became a member in 2019, and I have thoroughly enjoyed using the pool and workout areas of the facility. I truly hope that it can continue to be funded and functioning for our community. I feel that Troy is unique in many aspects and has continued to grow and thrive because of all the community benefits and programs Troy offers to children, adolescents, and adults, including seniors. I always look forward to receiving my Troy Today magazine to check out all the activities and classes available. I frequently visit the State Nature Center and other parks and trails. I very much hope that the Aquatic Center stays and is available for residents in the future. As a tax-paying resident of this great city, I fully support the funding needed for this important expense. Thank you very much. Comment 29 from Angela Cochi. As a resident of Troy and mother of two, the Aquatic Center is loved and enjoyed by our family. It would be sad if it did not reopen this, reopen next summer. I wanted to share my input. Comment 30 from Susan Seveck. Of course, the city should spend the money to maintain the pool. What are you thinking? Obviously, the city is not thinking. What a shame to even consider not maintaining the pool as an option. A longtime 27-year Troy voting resident, citizen. Comment 31, Jim and Sue Kador. Per the article on Click on Detroit this morning, please find the money to keep maintaining the pool, the outdoor pool. It is a gem. Comment 32 from Stephen Fallon. This place has been the fabric of our lives during the summer months. To lose this facility would be like losing a family member. With Troy being such a family-oriented community, this would be one step in dissolving that. Please keep our children healthy and active during a time when we see that diminishing, that when we see that diminishing throughout our nation. I'm sure with the competent City Council and the help and input from our mayor, we could come to some way of saving this unique facility that is woven into our community. Comment 33, Diane McCormick. You must find a way to continue to keep the Aquatic Center open. It is truly, it truly is a great asset for the city and our families. We have many fond memories of summer days at the pool. Losing this gem would be horrible. Comment 34 from Christopher Healy. I have lived in Troy for over 30 years. The outdoor pool is a wonderful community resource. Over the years, my kids spent countless hours enjoying the family-friendly environment it provides. I retired this year, and I'm looking forward to using the lap portion of the pool as part of my daily workout routine. I am aware that this property is sought after by land developers, developers. To me, this looks like the first step in trying to sell off this community asset. COVID-19 will eventually subside. We need to think long-term and maintain the Aquatic Center for future generations of Troy families. Comment 35 from Donna Healy. As a longtime resident of the City of Troy, I believe that the value of this city is in all of the family-friendly, friendly resources that Troy provides to its residents. The Troy Aquatic Center is a wonderful resource that my family has enjoyed since its opening and which my family has planned to introduce to my newest grandchild this summer. I believe it is important to continue to maintain the center for the use of our residents. We want to make sure that families continue to value living in Troy, so we can keep Troy a vibrant city for years to come. Comment 36 from Carol James. Keep the public pool, keep the pool, keep the public pool public for all to enjoy. You are chipping away at this community when you do not fund for the entire community. Fund the community pool. Comment 37 from Aleni Dillis. My family and I would be very sad if we did not have the Aquatic Center to go to every summer. Please do not let down the residents of Troy. We moved to Troy for the school's location of the city and the outdoor pool. Hashtag keep the pool. Comment 38 from Alex Jaxtis. Please make the investment required to keep the Aquatic Center functional for the long term. My wife, my wife and I just purchased a home in Troy, moving from Berkeley in October. The Aquatic Center is something that drew us to the area. Having facilities like the Aquatic Center adds a lot of value to an area, and as someone with two young kids, I of course see using it a lot over the next couple decades. Comment 39 from Emily Case. As Troy residents, we absolutely love the Troy Aquatic Center. During summer months, we visit as a family about twice a month. It's a great family activity that all of my kids enjoy. Please invest to keep it open. Comment 40 from Lawrence Yunan. I am a Troy resident. I strongly urge the board to reconsider their decision to not continue maintenance. All of these years of building out the area and money spent should not be stopped this one time as it will cost more money the following year to get the area back to where it needs to be. Again, I urge the board as a Troy resident to continue maintenance on the Aquatic Center, which is no different than public parks or other community centers. Comment 41 from Lilian Karmanian. We do not need a second pool in the City of Troy. Comment 42 from Jody Fisher. I urge you to find a way to leave the Aquatic Center open. Below is what I had previously sent to Ethan. Bottom line, the Aquatic Center is a nice attraction to have. Even for those that don't personally utilize it, it is a bonus to the city that they live in. It helps add the attractiveness of Troy, something we all want. Especially with all that has happened in 2020, closing it would just be one more blow to already challenging times. I'm sorry to hear that we are in this predicament. I think it is very important that the Aquatic Center remain open. It helps to keep our city vibrant and attractive. Closing the pool seems like taking a step backwards in building our city up. Troy is a popular city for families. Why would we eliminate, eliminate this family attraction? We have our own pool at home, but still visit the AC a couple times every summer. It's fun. Our neighbor Sterling Heights drastically improved Dodge Park right near their city offices, including adding a splash pad. There is also the Red Oaks Water Park. If we lose our pool, there will be a portion of residents that will go elsewhere due to lack of options, taking money from our city to theirs. I think we need to keep it open while also deciding on what other recreational activities we would like to add. Yes, this all takes money, but we're a resourceful city. Comment 43 from Jennifer Henderson-Zehner. Thank you for seeking input on this matter. TFAK is a fixture in Troy and must remain one for the benefit of all families in Troy. It provides a safe environment for families to have summer fun, jobs for those in our community and the surrounding communities, and is a true amenity for our world-class city. As a result of Troy, as a resident of Troy for the last 16 years and a frequent user of TFAK, I implore you to keep the TFAK. Comment 44 from Kristen Harons. We loved going to the Troy Aquatic Center when our kids were younger. Unfortunately, we stopped going when they, when they allowed non-Troy residents access. Beachwood is so popular because it is exclusive to Troy residents. I think the Troy Aquatic Center should be exclusive to Troy residents as well. Comment 45 from Harry McLean. Today I've read on the internet that the swimming pool needs some work maintenance-wise, work maintenance-wise. It is a lot of money, yes and no. If not much has been done in the 29 years it's been up, then it is worth it to put the money into it. As far as I can tell, this is just an end run by the City Council to shut the pool down so they can continue with putting in their over glorified, but more buildings up and get rid of green space by City Hall. If you council members can sit there and authorize $200,000 for a study to hire an architect to put up buildings that more than likely would not be used after two years without resident approval, then you can put the money into the pool. I really think that one of the reasons the pool is a money loss is the cost to get in for residents and non-residents to use. In actuality, it should be expanded to have water slides and other amenities to make it a moneymaker. Having lived in the city since 1975, on both the north and south ends, residents should have a pool to go to instead of the Red Oaks Water Park, which is a lot of times is full to capacity. Thanks for allowing the comment. Comment 46 from Dawn Turner. I'm in favor of keeping the pool. I was looking forward to visiting this year until COVID. I'm hopeful that we'll be able to use it next summer. Comment 47 from Denise and Jerome Conchol. I do not understand why this is even an issue with the city, particularly in view of the amount of development taking place in Troy right now and the additional tax revenue the city will earn from it. The Aquatic Center is one of Troy's jewels, and of course, it needs maintenance. Like all things worthwhile, sometimes the budget rules have to be bent to accommodate what gives joy, especially in the case of citizens coming off a disastrous 2020. Please make sure the Aquatic Center is open next summer for all Troy citizens to enjoy, and which allows us to put the stress of this year behind us. Do what's necessary to ensure it happens for us. Comment 48 from Donna Madras. I support keeping the Troy Family Aquatic Center open. It is a great place to spend time with kids on hot summer days. My kids use, used to look forward to going. It's a wonderful center, and I would hate to see it closed. Comment 49 from Cindy Kaiser. Please keep the Aquatic Center open. It sounds like the cost of repairs is minimal compared to the initial cost of the Aquatic Center. This center is a very popular attraction for many in Troy, and I would hate to see the entire center abandoned and become another vacant area. Comment 50 from Adrian Gilbert. Growing up, I learned to swim at the Troy Family Aquatic Center and found my love for swimming. It led me to competitive swimming career and my first job at the very pool it all started at. TFAK has a special place in my heart, and I believe Troy will be losing a valuable asset if it is closed. Even though I understand it costs more money to maintain and operate, it is a unique and priceless resource to the community it serves. It provides a place people can come to be active and create life-lasting memories. It's vital that TFAK remains open to not only provide fun, but also the grossly undervalued education about water safety and life skill of swimming. If closed, the cost-friendly swim lessons that this pool provides will be gone as well. Many people don't understand the importance of an outdoor pool and look at this place as just an expense, but I see it as a cornerstone to what Troy is today and an incredible asset that provides the community with fun and important services like swim lessons and fitness opportunities. To lose this facility would be to lose some of the value Troy has to offer this community. I hope that the Troy Family Aquatic Center will stay open, not because of the profits, but because, but for the benefit it provides the community. As I found my love for swimming at this very pool, I hope it remains open for my son to find the same joys I have found at TFAK. Comment 51 from a Troy resident. You are receiving this letter because we as Troy residents would like to voice our support that the city continues funding the maintenance and upkeep of the very important Family Troy, Family Aquatic Center for our city residents and families. We are not happy with decisions get made, with decisions getting made behind the door or with little advance notice for residents noticed to show up in your meetings. Before giving reasons why we need this Aquatic Center, I would like to know who, names specific, lead the, led the decision-making process as well as who are the ones, specific names, again, that vote to shut down the Aquatic Center? And also which projects they have voted yes. We are sick of action through special interests lobbying and poor management. This is very important as we will ensure that the right people should be voted to do the job for the Troy, for the residents of Troy. In addition, it is fair that we need to know where our money goes. Essentially, where does the City Council want to invest in their pet projects as well? Please send info on how I could find out all these details. Agreed with Mayor Baker. It's a great community asset and a gem, Baker said. We just have to make sure people It's a great community asset and a gem, Baker said. We just have to make sure people want us to continue to invest in it. Very glad that Mayor Baker understands the needs of Troy residents. I've asked for public comment for residents of the city, Baker said, if they should continue the investment and keep it open or whether we should look at other options. Would also like to thank Mayor Baker for sharing this important piece of info with the residents and his value of the aquatic center for Troy residents. Comment fifty-two from Randall Fornier. I fully, fully support the decision of city management to not fund any further repairs to open the Troy Family Aquatic Center for twenty twenty-one and permanently close this facility. In my opinion, this was a noble experiment and it is no longer financially feasible to continue with this enterprise, given the costs involved. This seems justified by the only forty percent usage by city residents. I believe it is time to rethink the use for this land and redirect the money to other areas where more residents would benefit. Comment fifty-three from Carol Qasab. We should definitely keep this pool. Our children grew up with it and grandchildren. Great times. Comment fifty-four from Shyla Edwards. The Troy Family Aquatic Center is one of the public gems in the city of Troy that make living in Troy special. The funds spent will enable children to enjoy wet and wonderful summers once the covid nineteen peril is past. Spend the necessary funds for repairs to keep the center open in summers to come. Comment fifty-five from Erin Huffer. In addition to the schools, one of the Troy's, one of Troy's strengths is an overall atmosphere that supports a healthy and fun family upbringing. One of Troy's weaknesses compared to surrounding areas is up-to-date amenities and activities for young families. I grew up here before returning with my wife and three children. In high school, as high schoolers often do, we would complain there was nothing to do in Troy. However, I have many fond memories of summers at the aquatic center from elementary school all the way to the wonderfully awkward jam fests in middle school. Surrounding communities don't have a nice public pool. And while there's been great growth in corporate developments recently in Troy, I have, I haven't noticed much investment in family-based amenities. Please do not let the aquatic center close or allow it to sit vacant for years as another plan is executed on. This is an opportunity to attract young families for more than just the schools. I fear squandering it would set the city back. Comment fifty-six from Ashley Jennings. I wholeheartedly support investing in the Troy Aquatic Center so that families and Troy residents can enjoy it in the years to come. Our family has used it often and had hoped it would continue to become a source of fond memories for our kids, ages three and seven as they grow up. We had planned to make it our primary activity this past summer prior to covid. I believe it's an asset to our community that this, that is unique within the area and is part of the family friendly friendly appeal of living in Troy. The experience of carefree summer days spent playing, learning to swim and enjoying the company of friends cannot be replaced by our indoor pool or other nearby public pools. While many of us enjoy the benefits of using this facility, all Troy residents can benefit from higher property values in the sense of community developed. One of city invests in unique amenities for its residents. I firmly believe that it is worth the cost of investment now to preserve the aquatic center and would be interested to learn more about what changes might make the membership, daily admission more attractive to Troy residents and neighbors. Comment fifty-seven from Susan Becker. The Troy Family Aquatic Center is an asset to the city of Troy and its residents. Many families cannot belong to a private swim club. To take the opportunity to be able to swim and learn and enjoy the outdoors away from our children and adults alike would be a sad day for the city of Troy and its residents. Raise the prices. Do whatever needs to be done to keep the pool open. Comment fifty, fifty-eight from Alex August. The Troy Aquatic Center is a crown jewel of the city and must remain open. The walk-in style pool, separate kids pool area, splash pad, water slides, volleyball courts and playground are unique and extremely popular with kids and families. I am not aware of any other city in the area that offers such a nice facility to its residents and guests. When considering a city to live in, special amenities like these are a key consideration, especially for families with kids, which in turn affects the enrollment in our schools. In fact, the aquatic center contributed to my decision to move to Troy from Sterling Heights in two thousand and six. I wanted to be part of a community that invested in the well-being, well-being of its residents. It would be a shame and a waste to shut down such a facility that is so appreciated by its residents. As a valued community asset and draw for prospective residents, I would certainly support a tax assessment to maintain the aquatic center similar to the library. Finally, a mothballed aquatic center sends the message that the city is in decline, in particular in relation to neighboring cities that are investing in amenities for their residents, including Sterling Heights and Warren. Without an established downtown area like Rochester, our city needs these types of amenities to remain competitive and vibrant. Comment fifty-nine from Lauren Henderson. I recently heard that Troy is considering the elimination of the aquatic center outdoor pool. I would hate to see this happen. I was born and raised in Troy and have many fond memories of the aquatic center. My husband and I purchased our home in Troy eleven years ago and we love raising our family here. The aquatic center is a place we love to go and enjoy as a family during the summer months. I hope that Troy will be able to invest in the aquatic center and allow many families to make memories there for years to come. Comment sixty from Jennifer and Preston Egan. This place is one of our family's favorite places to go after a hard work day or for a nice break on the weekend. I love that the season pass, that with the season pass, we don't feel like we have to spend all day to get away. Corona may have put a damper on this year, but we are regulars at T F A C. These types of family-friendly places are dwindling and falling into disrepair in Troy, making newer communities such as Rochester, such as Rochester and Northville more, much more attractive places to live for young growing families. Soon we will, soon will come the time when the schools will not be enough to make residents stay as the competition is tight. Without the edge, money must be invested in attractions such as the zoo, library, T F A C orchards and other community places. We have enough shopping malls and restaurants. We are in need of some family outing centers. Comment sixty-one from Karen Gilbert. Please keep T F A C open. It is of great value to me and my family. We love our city of Troy and consider T F A C a special gem. Thank you for consideration. Comment sixty-two from Doreen Randall. This email is to express residents concerns, concerns over the future of our aquatic center. This aquatic center has always been the jewel of Troy. It is a wonderful place to go on summer days. There are no Great Lakes nearby and Troy residents have always enjoyed this jewel. Yes, the aquatic center needs repairs, but everything, everything does. Our homes, our cars and the aquatic center. This pandemic has changed all of our lives and to use this pandemic to not make these repairs is irresponsible and reckless because it is just an excuse to use this land probably for more homes to be built. Everyone in this city knows Troy is solely interested in a large tax base and builds homes on every postage-sized stamped piece of land. We all know that is exactly what will happen. You will never replace the aquatics, this aquatic center because there isn't really anywhere for it to go. To make a no-go decision for eighty-three thousand people is totally unjust and un-American. The forty percent of daily visitors that are residents and the sixty percent of daily visitors that are non-residents should not be a deciding factor because it is enjoyed by all in this immediate area. Also, it should be noted that non-residents pay more for admission. Troy should be responsible and make the repairs, hoping that it can be opened in twenty twenty-one. If not, then it will be ready for the following year. To take the center away from this city and its residents without the residents even voting on this issue is unjust, unfair and play wrong, plain wrong. Do the right thing and let the people decide. Comment sixty-three from Leslie and Dave Fisher. I would like to voice our support for maintaining and continuing to keep open the Troy Family Aquatic Center. Our children have enjoyed countless hours at the facility and I believe is it a great, it is a great benefit to families in both our and surrounding communities. The large zero-depth entry pool is wonderful for young swimmers to gain comfort in the water and start to swim on their own with confidence. This was where my daughter first started swimming on her own without assistance during a summer when we had a season pass. The kiddie area, slides, sand area and snack bar all provide for a fun day that is close to home. There is not another facility like this nearby. It was mentioned in the last meeting that a splash pad would be a suitable alternative. I have to disagree with that statement. Splash pads are for much younger children and do not provide the opportunity to swim for all ages that the community pool does. It is very valuable to have an outdoor facility like this in our community and I hope you will do what is necessary to maintain it and determine how to continue to successfully operate the facility for our residents. Comment sixty-four from Heather Carr. As a homeowner in Troy for fourteen years, I would like to comment on the potential closure of the Troy Family Aquatic Center. My family has utilized and enjoyed the pool for many years. It is important for the community to have affordable public places to gather in this large city. We have many family member, memories here and it would be unfortunate to lose this benefit in the city where we live. We need to get back to a sense of normalcy for our children and I see this as imperative for our children to be able to, to be face-to-face with their friends and enjoy a sense of community. I am not sure why our tax dollars have not been set aside to continue to fund the aquatic center. What is deemed more important at this time? Our libraries need to be, to reopen as well as Birmingham has already done. The covid numbers are very low and the treatment is similar to the common cold and flu. We all need to, we all need to begin to get back to what we once knew before this pandemic hit. I urge the board members to keep the Troy Aquatic Center open. Comment sixty-five is from Renish Nishai. As an attorney who lives and works in our city, I am often confronted with the application and enforcement of our city's ordinances covering misdemeanor criminal charges, municipal violations to traffic tickets, et cetera. As you can imagine, I have firsthand experience in how our local ordinances affect the lives of our families, friends, neighbors and residents of Troy. Over the course of the last fourteen years, I have witnessed the absurd enforcement of those very antiquated laws and policies, many of which disproportionately affect minorities and residents of modest means. Simple acts such as not having your driver's license on your person or having no insurance on the vehicle are prosecuted as criminal acts by our city attorney. For illustration, if a Troy resident is issued a misdemeanor for having no license on their person because they forgot it at home, they end up paying fines, costs, being placed on probation and threatened with jail. In other words, simple traffic incidents are relentlessly prosecuted by our city attorney pursuant to a policy that gives no consideration even as to the wishes of the police officer who issued the ticket. And I'm not the only one who believes so. Recently, the Judge Hardig, Judge Hardig took to open court to opine that she found often, that she found often finds Troy's unwillingness to grant reductions unreasonable and finds the city attorney's decisions in these matters frustrating. This is more than frustrating. This is unjust. These injustices, along with many others, are being committed in our names. After all, each prosecution begins with a caption, "The people of the city of Troy versus Troy resident." Not only does overzealous prosecution have consequences, but elections do as well. It is my sincere hope that the election of this council will lead us to seek the accountability of those who prosecute in our name. I am calling upon the council to review and update, to review and update our archaic ordinances and demand the end of policies whose sole effect is to make criminals out of the citizens of the city of Troy. In closing, I would remind this council of the proclamation that unanimously passed in the shadow of the Black Lives Matter protests. This council dedicated itself and therefore this city to embodying integrity, accountability and professionalism in order to ensure justice for all. I thank you for your time and consideration. Comment sixty-six from William Gilbert. While unpredictable events have kept the Troy pool closed this year, I'm writing this note in hopes of the, that the investments can be made for next year to keep the pool active. As a Troy resident, I have spent countless hours with my children at this pool. Knowing the pool's cost has not, has not been self-contained. I would hope that some clever thinking is used to better utilize this great asset to the community and help it generate more income. While swimming is a great recreation, swimming is a life skill, especially in a state with so much water. Thank, thanks to, thanks for doing the right thing and not waste this community asset. Comment sixty-seven Lisa Bika Grodsky. The Troy Family Aquatic Center adds a sense of community to Troy and it's a safe, family-friendly outdoor place to enjoy a summer day. I have fond memories of bringing my children to swim and slide in the aquatic center. One even enjoyed a birthday party there. Please consider making repairs or replacements if necessary to the aquatic center, to the family aquatic center for the community to enjoy once the pandemic is behind us. I urge you not to replace the swimming pools with splash pads, but to add splash pads to modernize the facility. Budget the future maintenance as it is a unique outdoor space residents enjoy. It also attracts residents from neighboring cities who look to Troy as a future home. Comment sixty-eight from Albert Zoltan. I am writing you concerning the Troy Family Aquatic Center. I have heard that the city council may be considering closing this pool. I think the outdoor pool should stay open to keep, to help keep Troy's reputation as a family community intact. A city pool adds an element of family friendliness that is missing in surrounding communities. I have worked at the Troy Family Aquatic Center where I have seen how important the pool is to the local community and beyond. I have lifeguarded at the outdoor pool for the past two years. The Troy Family Aquatic Center is as much a product of its staff as it is a place to swim and slide. The pool employs up to thirty lifeguards a year and most of these lifeguards come from Troy. These lifeguards grew up going to T F A C with their friends and as kids, they all came to the pool. The pool creates memories and should continue to provide a place of fun in the sun for the Troy children who will be the lifeguards of tomorrow. As a Troy Family Aquatic Center lifeguard, I have been expertly trained and managed by Morgan Thrasher and her co-managers, Jake Zarnik and Ihad Juma and Morgan's former head manager Danielle Theobald. These people, including many dedicated assistant managers, swim teachers and lifeguards like Julia Janord, Sabrina Seegan, Ali Spanta, Philip Kim, Cameron Woolley, Jason Karlock, Cindy Strasmeri, Nick Yarbo, Zachary Sanuco and Megan and Justin Clifford have given so much time and energy into continuing T F A C's legacy, making the Troy Family Aquatic Center an Oakland County family destination for the past few years. T F A C helps put Troy on the map as a family friendly friendly community and they even have a mascot at T F A C that you may already know about Harvey the Purple Octopus. Harvey shows how fun and friendly T F A C has been for people in the past or the staff would not have been inspired to create him and put up numerous Harvey the Octopus safety signs in the first place. T F A C has, has been and is still is a fun place and Troy residents deserve a local summer place to swim in Troy in the future. T F A C may not be, may not make as much money as it used to. However, the benefit of having a city pool outweighs the costs of upkeep. If money is a major issue with keeping T F A C open, some marketing and facility innovation could extend the life of the pool. If I were the city manager, I would remodel T F A C to include a section of the pool for swim team meets and practices, lap swim and actively solicit local teams and swimmers to rent and use the space. Also, I would not discount the entry price for the evening. I would just close the pool earlier. It gets slow after dinner. The pool is great on sunny days. It doesn't need to be open after dinner. I would consider looking for corporate sponsors for the pool as well. Troy has many local companies headquartered nearby who may want additional notoriety and exposure. The city of Troy is the city of tomorrow today. I hope the city council finds it within their purview to save a local family tradition. The Troy Family Aquatic Center can still make the future as bright as all of our yesterdays for another generation of Troy citizens. And now there are, I'll just go to four emails that were received after four P M that you've agreed to read. This is from Bridgette and Mark Bealan. As residents of Troy, we greatly value the Troy Family Aquatic Center. We feel strongly it should continue as a city asset. This is from Sheri Hedges. We waited for this pool for so many years that our kids grew up without it while other cities around us had theirs in place. Finally it came and now our grandchildren love it. Will the city council actually listen to those who feel it's worth it to keep our pool, to keep, or will they bow to the money developers and add yet more commercial property? Almost every square inch is for on in Troy thanks to the past city council. Welcome, thanks to the past city council. Welcome to the city of Southfield's twin. Next comment is from Margaret Richards. I have been a resident of Troy for fifteen years. I was eighteen when the T F A C opened and have many happy memories. Then as a mother, both of children, both of my children learned to swim there. We always had a membership even when we lived in Royal Oak. When we moved to Troy, the T F A C was a great selling point for our family. I strongly encourage you to approve the funds needed to keep this facility open. Next comment is from Hiba Juma. It is just, it's, it's just sad to see the debate case of the pool, either keep it open or close it. It is great, the most source of, for the city financially. It's a wonderful place for kids to have fun and learn how to swim and a great, good hobby and sometimes a therapy that the elderly citizens use. This pool came through a long way and finally we can see lovely and friendly staff who are willing to go beyond their job to make everything good for the citizens. I highly suggest the pool stays open. Please keep in mind, closing the pool will effectively, will affect the citizens financially, physically and mentally. That's a very important aspect to look at and consider. Citizens, especially the elder ones, can't, can't afford the cost of a lifetime membership. They will be depressed if the pool were closed. I believe the pool should be open and deep thinking needs to make the correct action. And now we have voicemails.
Before you start that first one, I just want to say thank you for reading all those. That was pretty impressive. So I, I know how hard that is. So we'll start with that, but thank you very much. That was seventy-two emails. It's probably more than you ever expected, but thank you very much. Let's go ahead and continue with the voicemails now.
Okay.
Good evening. This is Todd Makupa, state representative for the city of Troy and Clotson. I'm calling to give a legislative update and just wanted to share the following information. The census is going to end this month, but hopefully there is a bill package in Congress that might extend it further. In addition, this week, we are expected to be in legis, the legislative legislature to be working on the budget. The governor and our leadership in the House and Senate are working to finalize the budget details right now. And I will provide you that information as soon as I have it. The Energy Committee and the local government committees that I serve on have not had, have no meetings this week, but we've had meetings in the past. Although local government, there has been no further conversation on property taxes. We are working with House Fiscal, my office is working with House Fiscal on an effort to see what we can do to address the revenue sharing formulas with cities, villages and townships, both the statutory and the constitutional revenue. townships, both the statutory and the constitutional revenue sharing. Are not bringing our CVP, cities, villages, and townships, up to pool funding. So, we can work on the legislative side, the constitutional, we cannot require a bigger effort, but what we can do in the legislative process, I'm working on that. We also have, last week, in the Energy Committee, discussed residential PACE program. I know that Oakland County is cut through with lean and green Michigan. It's helping with the PACE programs to make buildings more energy efficient. There are some bills that were introduced that are under discussion, being reviewed. We do have a bill, 757, on early absentee ballots, which would allow absentee ballots to be counted and prepped a day early, but there are committees that it needs to go to on the House side, even though it passed the Senate. And finally, today is the International Day of Peace. It was an honor to be at the event that the Troy Interface Group held last week, and to be followed by our mayor in issuing the International Day of Peace proclamation. Thank you so much. This is Padma Kupa, State Representative for Troy and Clotston. Thank you.
This is State Senator Mallory McMaro with a legislative update. Last week, the Senate voted 34 to 2 to pass Senate Bill 757, which would allow clerks and election workers to start processing absentee ballots a day early, removing the air sleeve from the outer envelope, beginning the day before Election Day. I want to send my thanks to the council for their resolution in favor of this bill, and I was glad to see it finally pass, after being removed from our agenda multiple times. The bill now moves to the State House for consideration. We are expected to vote on the budget shortly, although the governor's office and the legislative leadership have come to a high-level agreement that guarantees no cuts to K-12 funding and no cuts to revenue sharing for local municipalities, and these were two of my main priorities that I've been advocating for in this challenging year. To the mayor and city manager, a friendly reminder to register for our upcoming meeting for you with an expert from the Senate Fiscal Agency to provide an update on the budget and answer any questions you may have as you plan the city of Troy's budget. And finally, to all of our residents, I hope you'll join me for a virtual coffee hour that we hold almost every week that the Senate is in session. It's a great way to get an update on what's happening in your state legislature and get any of your questions answered. Find out more at facebook.com/mcmaroformichigan, or you could just search my name on Facebook, Mallory McMaro. Thanks so much. This is State Senator Mallard.
Hey there. My name is Matt. I'm a Troy citizen. We are asking you guys to please keep TFAK open at all costs. That's one of the biggest reasons we moved to Troy 14 years ago. I myself am a fourth-year lifeguard at TFAK, and it is just an absolute pleasure going back there every year. We would be extremely disappointed with our government if they did not choose to do the repairs, and so we hope you guys decide to do the repairs and to get TFAK up and running ASAP. Thank you for taking my comment. Have a wonderful day.
Hello. This is Natalie Rollinger. The Troy Aquatic Center is an amazing facility that is one of the reasons we love living in Troy. Our family was devastated when we heard the city was considering plans to no longer support the facility. In our opinion, it is a vital part of our community. We did not have any other outdoor swimming options in Troy. The aquatic center is used for swimming laps, camp kids, and to teach lifelong water safety skills. It's used to train lifeguards of our community needs, provide high schoolers and college kids jobs, and it gets kids outside and helps in the fight against obesity in our community. And anyone with kids these days knows how that's getting harder and harder every year. Along with our schools, it provides incentives for families to move into Troy and preserve our home values. The aquatic center should be, above all, considered in an amenity for Troy residents, much like the library and parks, which are nonprofit centers. It appears the aquatic center can make the needed improvements and plan for a successful 2021 season and run three more years while other options are explored. Troy needs to be a place where families love to work, live, and play. Eliminating that would be a step backward, not forward, for our community. As a citizen of Troy, we implore the city council to use the funds to keep the aquatic center open now and investigate keeping it open long-term. Thank you for your consideration. Have a great day.
Hi. My name is Said from 6706 Whiteing Drive, Troy. I wanted to vote yes for welcoming Michigan, the notice what you guys sent. I am in favor of this, so please consider myself and my wife's vote as yes for this. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Daniela Nachava from number 58620246. I've heard about the discussion to continue the membership with Welcoming America. I'm not sure why we are still discussing it. I think Troy has always been proud to be a city of so many ethnic groups, so we do need to be a member of Welcoming America and have more and more events related to this initiative. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Said Dalmo. I'm a resident of Troy since 2002, and also, I am an immigrant, and with the new movement that's going on, the national movement, I request and I support the city of Troy to renew the membership of Welcoming America, Welcoming Michigan membership. Thank you very much. Hi. My name is Said Dalmo.
Hello. This is Sheila. Hello. This is Sheila Edwards, and I am requesting that the funds be spent to keep the Troy Family Aquatic Center open. The Troy Family Aquatic Center is one of the public gems in the city of Troy that make living in Troy special. The funds spent will enable children to enjoy wet and wonderful summers once the COVID-19 pharoah is passed. Spend the necessary funds, please, for repairs to keep the center open in summers to come. Thank you.
I just keep the aquatic center open.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Jean Stein, and I want to address the aquatic center item on tonight's agenda. Recreation opportunities for Troy residents are an important part of family life, and the aquatic center is no exception. It is also the envy of some of our neighboring communities. In the summer, it is central to many children and family activities. It is a gathering place, just like the library and the community center. Like any other facility, time and use take their toll, and repairs become necessary. That certainly does not mean total demolition. There must be a study of the alternatives to closing down the aquatic center. In the meantime, winterizing is primary until the alternatives to closing can be met. Thank you very much. I hope you will consider my thoughts on this matter. Bye.
Hi. My name is Nina Lewis, and I am 10, and I really like the aquatic center because it is a fun place to just walk to, because we live pretty close to it, and it's really big, and you can do, you can just really swim and enjoy yourself there, so I really hope you'll keep it open. Bye. Hi. My name...
Hello. My name is Gabrielle Lagrodsky, and I'm here to comment on the city's work with the aquatic center. And I think the aquatic center, for me, when I was a young child, was the funnest place ever. A lot of houses in Troy, I've noticed, don't have pools, and as someone who didn't have a backyard pool growing up, the aquatic center was my favorite place to go. It was a great place to escape the heat and hang out with my friends, and I think that Troy would really benefit from having the aquatic center out this was a summer unlike no other, but I'm sure by next summer or even the next two years, everyone will be back to the aquatic center and being back with their friends and just enjoying it, and I think it's a great place for the community to come together, and it's a great place to beat the heat. So, I, yeah, thank you.
Hi. My name is Sandy Jagurski Magnus. I have lived in Troy for 50 years, same house, and this pool has been here for 28 years, and it should be here for many more. I drove a school bus for 16 years, and so many of my thousands of kids use that pool and will be using it, and their kids will probably be using it. I really believe in, let's forget the library mileage, and please, please, let's keep that pool for our kids at Troy who don't have a pool. I thank you very much. Goodbye.
As a follow-up to my September 14th City Council meeting cabinet acknowledging Welcome Week, which ended yesterday, September 20th, 2020, this is Lisa Bika-Grodsky, member of the Global Troy Advisory Committee, wishing to also encourage City Council and Mayor Baker to review the Welcoming America membership. Renewing the membership, as a member of Global Troy Advisory Committee, I along with the other members of Global Troy, helping city liaison, established the initiative back in 2017. The membership offers an array of programs, trainings, and networking that aligns with the values of our city, Global Troy Advisory Committee, to strengthen the volunteer work of the committee to benefit the diversity and the diverse community at large. I thank you so much for your consideration to renew the Welcoming America membership. Thank you so much.
Hi. My name is Catherine Fleming. I'm calling about the public pool. I think it should be paid for and maintained and opened, hopefully, next year. Things like the public pool and things like the tennis courts that used to be at the middle schools are the things that make Troy a nice place to live. I think it would be a mistake to shut down the pool. Thank you.
All of those are voicemails that we had, including the ones that were received late.
Okay. Wow. Well, that concludes those that have participated in public comment this evening, either via email to publiccomment@troymi.gov or via voicemail at 248-524-3302. Obviously, 87 different people participated right now, and the grand majority of them are related to the aquatic center, and I'd like to propose to council members, because now is the time for city council and city administration to reply and respond to public comment, I'd like to propose that we hold our comments on the aquatic center to those residents that provide a public comment, to, we have that discussion in I-6 when that's on the agenda. Does that seem fair to everybody? Makes sense? There were a few other things on there that were not related to the aquatic center that I wouldn't mind, I certainly want to allow opportunity for city administration or city council comment. I'll do a quick start by saying I appreciate all the emails regarding the Troy Public Library and the support of Kathy Russ, and I'm a big fan of Director Kathy, and it's nice to hear people in the community share good news as well and share their support and love of her and what she does and what our library offers to our community. The other, there's a couple others, I was wondering if city management could work with, I think it was Mario and Lorraine Sussel regarding the traffic noise in MDOT. That was a public comment, that was number 27. If somebody could reach out to her, City Manager Miller, if you want to address it now, go ahead.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and members of council. There's really not much to address right now, but we'll connect up our city engineer, Bill Hootery, with the couple. You know, MDOT had conducted a very long process input going back a fair number of years, and Bill Hootery, our city engineer, did represent the city. I would just inform council that the decision-making process over noise abatement on a federal project is rather complex and very rule-like, and Bill Hootery is probably the most knowledgeable of that on city staff, and so we'll have him contact the residents and inform them of the process.
Very good. I appreciate that, and I know it has definitely been the talk of next door in that area and out in the community, I've heard a lot of people talk about it, but as long as we can connect them with the people that actually do make the decisions relating to that, reminding everybody that council, we can certainly weigh in, but we have no authority as it relates to the sound walls, which makes it a little difficult for us to do that, but we certainly want to connect you with the right people. The, before I forget, I also want to thank State Senator Mallory McMaro and State Representative Padma Kupa for their legislative updates. Certainly, if we were meeting in person, they would have come in person and provided those quarterly or biannually updates, so appreciate the information coming out of Lansing and what they brought to us. There was a comment early on from John, a concerned citizen, about development concerns. I'm happy to reach out and speak to him directly, or if anybody wants to, I'm wondering if you can provide that contact information to us, City Clerk Dixon, I think it was an email, but definitely, there's lots we could talk about as it relates to development, and we remember that it was not that long ago that development seemed to be the thing we talked about most in this city prior to COVID. In fact, we were working a lot on things just before that, so happy to talk to him. And just, there was a comment made, City Attorney Bloom, regarding the enforcement from the city prosecutor's office and city attorney's office, I didn't know if you wanted to address that at this time?
Yes, Mayor. I think it's really difficult for me to be able to address it because I think that he's conflating the traffic ticket prosecution versus the prosecution for crimes under the state of Michigan's laws, such as no insurance and no valid driver's license. So, I would like an opportunity, and again, I'm not afraid of accountability, I'm very disappointed in receiving this accusation that our office is somehow not fairly representing the city's interests and fairly prosecuting, and I would appreciate an opportunity to address that at a later time.
Okay. Much appreciated. There were several comments that related to Welcoming Michigan and Welcome America. I know that's a report in our agenda this evening, I just kind of thought we would talk about it during that report section if we wanted to, and I look to you, Councilmember Chamberlain Crandall, because I have a feeling you have some comments on that, if not others as well, so if it's okay, we can wait till it's more in the agenda there. Okay. Let me say, for those of you that are watching at home that submitted public comment relating to the aquatic center, it is on our agenda coming up as I-6, and we will certainly be talking about that. There'll be a presentation by city management, and then council will weigh in and we'll have the opportunity to address any of your specific comments. I just want to thank all of you that provided the public comment, and you will hear from us more on that. Was there anybody else on council that wanted to speak to any of the other concerns? Mayor President Hamilton?
Just wanted to thank all the people also that responded to your Facebook post, Mayor Baker, and other council members' Facebook posts on the aquatic center. I think we got a clear, wide range... think that he's conflating the traffic ticket prosecution versus the prosecution for crimes under the state of Michigan's laws, such as no insurance and no valid driver's license. So I would like an opportunity, and again, I'm not afraid of accountability. I'm very disappointed in receiving this accusation that our office is somehow not fairly representing the city's interests and fairly prosecuting. And I would appreciate an opportunity to address that at a later time.
Okay. Much appreciated. There were several comments that related to welcoming Michigan and welcome America. I know that's a report in our agenda this evening. I, I kind of thought we would talk about it during that report section if we wanted to. And I look to you, Councilmember Chamberlain Kraga, because I have a feeling you have some comments on that, if not others as well. So if it's okay, we can wait till it's more in the agenda there. Okay. Let me, let me say, for those of you that are watching at home that submitted public comment relating to the Aquatic Center, it is on our agenda coming up as I-6, and we will certainly be talking about that. There'll be a presentation by city management and then council will weigh in and we'll have the opportunity to address any of your specific comments. I just want to thank all of you that provided the public comment and you will hear from us more on that. Was there anybody else on council that wanted to speak to any of the other concerns? Mayor Protem Hamilton?
Just wanted to thank all the people also that responded to your Facebook post, Mayor Baker, and other council members' Facebook posts on the Aquatic Center. I think we got a clear, wide range of Troy residents to weigh in on this. And we'll discuss later in I-6 too. But I just wanted to mention their comments as well, which were provided, we could all view it on our Facebook pages, but we were also provided it by city staff via email. So we saw your comments too, and that was very useful as well.
That's right. And I don't know, this question, just a reminder to the residents at home, we, we, once the agenda comes out the week prior to a meeting, we're given the opportunity to ask questions in writing and seek information from city management. So you'll often hear us talking about things that were provided to us in written answers. And today, as part of that question and answer packet, all of the comments that were provided on my social media were disseminated throughout council, as well as the emails that I've received on this issue as well. So yes, thank you for mine. I plan to talk about a little bit of that later as well. But robust community engagement, we'll just say that. And Mayor, Mayor, Mayor Protem, no, not, not right now, Councilmember Abraham, you had your hand up as well.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I did also want to respond back to John, who was the sixth or seventh person that, that wrote an email. I, I have lived in the city of Troy for all of my life, so over 40 years. I live on Long Lake between John R. DeQuinter. I've seen the area develop over those 40 years. And I know exactly which areas of forestry that have gone down, particularly in the last five to 10 years. I know exactly what spots you're talking about. You're talking about John R. between Long Lake and Waddles. You're talking about Waddles between DeQuinter and John R. You're talking about John R. on the, the east side between 16 and 17. I fully appreciate those comments. You will find that it was because of things like that, those clear cuts, that actually drove this, the previous council to put together a tree protection ordinance. And I believe that passed in 2016. And now there are some restrictions on if a developer who buys property and city council cannot control who buys tracts of land in Troy. But what it can do and what it has done is put an ordinance in place to prevent wholesale clear cutting by incentivizing tree, tree and woodland protection. So I would encourage you to go into our ordinances and look at what we've done to help mitigate that. It has been a tool to help prevent that. I, I know green space is a huge issue in Troy. You know, last year when I was running for reelection, green space and, and development, or some would say overdevelopment, Troy, were the two big issues. So I can completely appreciate your concerns. Council is certainly doing whatever it can within its purview to make sure that green spaces are protected as much as possible without infringing on property owners' rights. So I look forward to Ms. Dixon forwarding us your email. We can certainly talk some more. But I, I do want you to know that I definitely can respect and understand those views. And I think there's, there's many on council right now that also share that view as well.
Very well. Counselmember Hoderick?
If I could just add on to that, Mayor, thank you. At one point, after we had that tree ordinance put into place, just for background, anybody listening to how we are fighting to protect green space as best we can, Lansing during a lame duck session was on a fast track to pass some, a law that would have upended the ordinance that we had worked so hard to put together, the planning commission at the time, our planning department, city council, all in the wake of an outcry from residents like John. And we leaned real hard into our state rep to say, hey, that, that is not something that meets the needs of this particular community. And we would hope that, you know, that would not go forward. And it didn't. I share this as some, you know, to make the point that I'm constantly watching for, for making sure we can represent what we have heard from our residents as an outcry as best we can, the protection of, of the forest, green space, the green space. We had the subcommittee that looked at opportunities. And we hear you, no matter which side of the city we live on, we're all worried about it. And we hear you. And I commit to continue to keeping my eye on that and weighing in, whether it be locally or in Lansing. And I really appreciate him calling in and I appreciate the observation he's making.
Thank you. Yes. Anybody else, city council or city management, wish to give reply to public comment, aside from things that are, we're going to talk about later in the agenda? City Manager Miller?
Um, I just have a general comment in that, for whatever reason, my battery almost went to zero. And as you notice, I went and I reconnected everything underneath. So I think I'm going to be okay.
Okay. But if you disappear, we'll know where you are. Thank you. Thanks for the update. Okay. Again, City Clerk Dixon, oh, Mayor Protem Hamilton?
I just want to say, it was nice to hear from Mayor Jeanne Stein in the comments too. She was on council when the Aquatic Center was built, so we definitely value her feedback and it was great to hear from her.
Jumping the gun, but yes, absolutely. It was always a calming and nice voice to hear. So with that said, again, City Clerk Dixon, thank you for organizing all of that public comment, first of all, for reading them, playing the voicemails, pretty seamless, I have to say. So very impressed with that. And thank you, Josh, the 80, what was it, 87 of you? 87 of you that participated in public comment during the meeting and the 100-plus in other forums and dozens of emails and such that we'll talk about a little bit. With that said, I'm going to call for a quick 10-minute recess, just so we can reset everyone at home, get ready, so we come back with regular business. So let's, I'm going to say nine minutes. So let's come back at 9:15 if we can. Okay? All right, we're temporarily recessed. We will go back on the record here, the Troy City Council meeting. There are no postponed items this evening, so move on to regular business. This evening, I do have some mayoral appointments. So I will resolve that the mayor, I will move that we appoint Cheryl Bush, Lawrence Kiesling, and Alan Kirilich to the Downtown Development Authority for the terms that expire September 30th, 2024.
Support.
All right. Moved by the chair, supported by Mayor Protem Hamilton, that the mayor appoints Cheryl Bush, Lawrence Kiesling, and Alan Kirilich to the Downtown Development Authority for the terms that expire September 30, 2024. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kraga?
Yes.
Councilmember Eric Sangalp?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Motion carries and we thank them for their service to our city. That concludes mayoral appointments this evening. We move on to city council appointments. I'll turn it over to Mayor Protem Hamilton for a couple.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move that Troy City Council appoint Suzanne Forbes-Dicker to the Historic District Commission for the term expiring March 1st, 2023.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Protem Hamilton, supported by Councilmember Brooks, that Troy City Council appoint Suzanne Forbes-Dicker to the Historic District Commission for the term that expires March 1st, 2023. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kraga?
Yes.
Councilmember Eric Sangalp?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes. Motion carries and we thank Suzanne very much for her service to our community. Mayor Protem Hamilton?
And next, Troy City Council, I'd like to move that Troy City Council appoints to the Parks and Recreation Board Kelly Martin and Casey Calusi for the term expiring September 30th, 2023.
Support.
Support.
In stereo. Moved by Mayor Protem Hamilton, supported by Councilmember Brooks, the Troy City Council appoints Kelly Martin and Casey Calusi to the Parks and Recreation Board for the term expiring September 30, 2023. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kraga?
Yes.
Councilmember Eric Sangalp?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Motion carries and we thank Kelly and Casey for their service to our community as well. That concludes Troy City Council appointments this evening for boards and committees. We move on to I-2 board and committee nominations. First, the mayoral nominations. And I'd like to nominate Tara Thompson-Cusack as an in-district member to the Downtown Development Authority for the term expiring September 30th, 2024.
Support.
Support.
Moved by the chair and supported by Councilmember Eric Sangalp, that nominate Tara Thompson-Cusack as an in-district member to the Downtown Development Authority for the term expiring to the Downtown Development Authority for the term expiring September 30th, 2024. Any discussion? I will say her application will be submitted to the city clerk tomorrow for everyone's review for our next meeting. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Councilmember Eric Sangal?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Motion carries. That concludes mayoral nominations this evening. Mayor Pro Tem Hamilton, are there any city council nominations? So that concludes board and committee nominations. There's no request for a closed session, so we move on to I-4, which is the Approval of Bond Refunding Resolution. This will be introduced by City Manager Mark Miller, City Attorney Laurie Greg Bloom, Chief Financial Officer Rob Malzak, and I also understand that we have Board Counsel Terry Donnelly on the line and a financial advisor on bonds, Robert Benzinski. So I will start with you, I guess, City Manager Miller.
Thank you, Mayor, and hello, Council. I would note that Terrence Donnelly does have an associate with him, and then Higgin, who's also here. They're here primarily along with Bobby Bezinski if there are questions. I am going to do a little introduction, and then City Attorney Bloom is going to talk a little bit about the legal restrictions on most of the monies that were paid to the DDA. And then Rob Malzak, our Chief Financial Officer, will talk a little bit about why this makes sense. So in this fiscal year, we've had in the DDA's budget the payment for just over $4 million related to the parking structure, and it has been in our three-year budget for the previous two years. So I have given this a lot of thought. And before even Terry Donnelly and Bobby Bezinski came to us where that because the city backs with full faith and credit the bonds that the DDA has the DDA has to pledge first and foremost their TIF to pay for these. And my thoughts were that if we could reduce the amount of the, you know, the total bond, and in other words, reduce the principal, we could reduce the payments. So what was also happening at the same time is we've had lower interest rates have locked in. And we have is that if we go forward with this deal by utilizing just over $3.1 million to reduce the amount of indebtedness, we then will increase the TIF revenues at the DDA level. And Rob can go into that a little bit more. And so in the end, the amount of risk by the city backing these bonds is reduced also. So I think overall, this is a very, very good move for the city and DDA. And it will also free up a considerable amount of money for the DDA's budgeting, approximately $400,000 a year. So I would like our city attorney to talk a little bit about the restrictions on the $3.1 million that we're using towards reducing the amount of debt. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Mayor, Mayor, I just, I see that our bond counsel, Terry Donnelly, is on the call right now. And I do thank council for asking questions in advance. We were able to provide answers to all of the questions that were asked. And in fact, this is one of the questions that was asked, what are the restrictions? Essentially, these were tax-exempt bonds, and so there are some legal restrictions. And we, there are some opportunities to potentially do capital projects, but that is not really something that is feasible in light of the time restrictions. And, you know, looking at the advantages of having this money devoted towards paying off the bonds, it makes the most sense financially. And with that, I would just ask if Mr. Donnelly has anything to add.
Nothing to add at this time, Laurie. It's just the, this, what Laurie is talking about is the steps that are required to be taken are those that need to be taken to preserve the tax-exempt status of the 2013 bonds until they are paid off. If you approve this resolution tonight, the bonds will be paid off for good on November 1st of 2021, at which time they will be totally retired. And you won't have to worry about the tax status of these outstanding bonds after that.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Mr. Malzak, or Chief Financial, did you have anything to add at this point as part of the presentation?
Right, so, thank you, Council. Wanted to say that this is a win-win. What we're going to do here is we're going to have about $2.9 million in savings. So that's pure savings that goes back to the DDA. And like Mark had mentioned, it also helps us when you look at the bottom line of the exposure to the general fund, or the city is limited because we're going to lower the amount outstanding. And then now this just makes each year after year, as long as we don't have any issues with our DDA TIF, we should have extra money for the DDA to spend year after year at about $430,000 a year.
That's amazing. I guess it's time for questions from council. I saw Mayor Pro Tem Hamilton had raised his hand, and several of you have asked questions already in writing that we talked about, but Mayor Pro Tem Hamilton, go ahead.
Thank you. My question is, why are the bonds set to be paid off in a year rather than now? I'm sure there's some technical reasons for that, but I'm just curious.
You are correct, sir. There are technical reasons. The bonds, they were issued in 2013. And normally, based on the advice of your financial advisor, they cannot be prepaid for eight to 10 years. In this particular case, these bonds, when they were issued in 2013, are payable for the first time without any premium or penalty on November 1st of 2021. That's the answer to your question.
That's a great answer. So will the new refunding bonds have restrictions similar to that? Considering how low their interest rate is, I doubt that would be a useful option for us, but I'm just curious.
I think at this point, I would defer to your financial advisor, Bobby Benzinski, on this. I know he's on the call.
He'll say, um, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, city manager, CFO, and city attorney. Yes, we will have these bonds callable. It is a general procedure, the bonds are callable approximately nine to 10 years after the date of issuance. Investors do not want to invest if the bonds cannot, or can be called prior to that date. Since the bonds that are remaining go out to 2033, we would be looking at a call feature somewhere around 2029 or 30.
Okay. Thank you. So the, will the refunding bond, refunding bonds then be initiated October 31st, and then we'll have to wait a year to pay off the original bonds, correct? So what kind of?
Yes, but they will.
By having both? Yeah.
Yes, but there will be a escrow established that will pay those bonds off. The money we've put in an escrow that will pay the non-callable, I'm sorry, the callable bonds off, and the interest that relates to those will be paid from the escrow. The city will be responsible for the principal and interest on the 2021 maturity.
Okay.
That is not called.
Makes sense because we need to hold that, and we need to lock in the interest rates that are incredibly low right now. I saw that this will reduce the interest rates from the current 2013 bond issue, something like 5% to 6%, and this will reduce it to below 2%, which is essentially free savings for our city, which is fantastic. And I thank our financial staff for doing that for the AAA bond rating. This is why Councilmember Hoderick is always hammering our AAA bond rating because when opportunities like this rise, where basically we can save just shy of half a million dollars a year, we have the ability to do that. And right now, we're taking advantage of that. I'm incredibly proud that you guys put this together. This is excellent for our city.
Very good. You also forgot the great point you mentioned earlier, but in addition to all those wonderful things, it's reducing the city's liability by backing these DDA bonds. So I mean, it is really like a win-win-win. So, and I mean, that's, it's almost like, it's like Christmas morning here with the bonds. So appreciate that. Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes, I want to echo that this is great news. And I have a question, probably for City Manager Miller. For the $431,000 in TIF revenue expected to be available on a monthly basis, can you just reveal this of what the DDA can spend it on based on their DDA, their TIF development plan?
Yes, the DDA has a, a DDA plan, which is made up of both the, the, the development plan and the TIF portion. And currently, the, the, the tax increments are dedicated first to service these bonds. And secondly, there's some maintenance with the DDA can do with the median. We spent about $300,000 to get up with that I had. Also, some marketing, and also we have the Quality Development Initiative, which doesn't actually cost money, but it diverts some of potential TIF dollars to developers who follow the rules. So we have this new influx, let's just say approximately $400,000 a year. We anticipate that the DDA is going to want to spend some of that money on, or than what's included in the, the development plan now. So the city staff would have to work with the DDA to amend the, the development plan about what they want to do in the future, and then city council, that development plan. And that process, it takes a fair number of months. It's not a process.
Thank you, Mark. Good question. Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga, did you have additional questions? Any other questions for city management, or Mr. Donnelly, or Mr. Ben? Yes, Mayor Pro Tem Hamilton?
Yeah, to echo what Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga said, I, for that substantial of a annual increase of almost half a million dollars, I would like to know what, I know the DDA, we appoint their members, and they have some degree of autonomy, but what, how can we influence that process and be involved? And kind of come to a deliberate inside where that money is going? Because that's quite a substantial amount that you really do a lot of good for these.
City Manager Miller?
Mayor and Council. The city council has two approvals. One, you have to approve any changes to the DDA plan. You have that authority, it's not a recommendation from the DDA. And also, you approve their budget every year. So you do have the ultimate authority to what happens with those future dollars.
Thank you. So yeah, for budget, for budget study sessions next year, I hope that that's, maybe we can devote a little more to the DDA. Because to me, that's quite a bit, quite a bit that we can do for that area, for the critical area of our city. And I'm really excited for what we can do with that, how that will bound up for our community.
I also want to add to that. I am the council representative on the Downtown Development Authority, so I'm happy to take everything we talk about. I'll just keep that in mind. Any other questions at this point? Would somebody like to move the resolution? Councilmember Eric Sangal?
I'll unmute myself here. Okay, I'd like to move I-4, Approval of Bond Refunding Resolution, as printed in the agenda.
Support.
Support.
Moved by Councilmember Eric Sangal, supported by Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga, that we approve I-4, Approval of Bond Refunding Resolution, as lengthily printed in the agenda packet this evening. Any further discussion? Okay, the vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Eric Sangal?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Motion carries to our two additions to the meeting, Mr. Donnelly and Mr. Benzinski. Thank you so much for your input.
You're quite welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, thanks for stopping by. Next on the agenda is I-5, A Budget Amendment and Standard Purchasing Resolution for Oakland County Purchasing Cooperative Raptor House Exhibit Construction at the Staged Nature Center. And this will be introduced by Public Works Director Kurt Bovensee. Hi, Kurt.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you. And just a reminder, in efforts of total transparency, we're bringing these budget amendments. City Manager Miller is bringing these budget amendments as regular business items, so there's opportunity to discuss and fully describe the project. Tonight before you, the Troy Nature Society, the nonprofit organization that runs the Troy Nature Center, acquired five injured owls in 2018. And since then, we've been partnering with the organization to develop a permanent house for the owls. This includes a contribution fundraisers that the Troy Nature Society did, and includes a $50,000 contribution by the Troy Nature Society to contribute towards this project. This project was designed in kind by a member of the Troy Nature Society and worked closely with the natural, naturalist that takes care of the owls. So we did bid this project out in 2019, and unfortunately, it came much higher than what both the city and the nature center had budgeted to allow for construction. So tonight before you is a request to expend the capital funds for a cooperative agreement with Oakland County. Unfortunately, with the pandemic, construction prices have gone up approximately 16% to 20%, depending on the project, which does require a budget amendment to successfully complete this project, get to allow the owls to have a safe house for this winter. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Kurt. Any questions from council? I do have a quick question. Just, this is the project that Wyatt Lucas was so involved in fundraising for early on in the community, correct? All right. Just making sure. So, thank you, Wyatt. Okay, no questions? Any further? I know some were asked earlier. Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
I just wanted to make a quick comment. In reading the backup material, I could just see all the collaboration that was going on between all the different actors in the city, and just want to thank you, Director Bovensee, thank the, the nature center, thank our, the financial budgeting side, just everything. I think it's, it's the city at its best when you see all that collaboration happening.
Thank you. Yes, for sure. Any questions? Someone like to move the resolution? It's my question. Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
I will move I-5 Budget Amendment and Standard Purchasing Resolution for Oakland County Purchasing Cooperative Raptor House Exhibit Construction at the Staged Nature Center, as printed.
Support.
Support.
Moved by Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga, supported by Mayor Pro Tem Hamilton, that we approve I-5 Budget Amendment and Standard Purchasing Resolution for Oakland County Purchasing Cooperative Raptor House Exhibit Construction at the Staged Nature Center, as printed. Any discussion? All right. Well, I will definitely ditto Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga's comments about everyone working together on this, and we do appreciate all the work that goes into something like this. And we often just get presented with these resolutions, but we know that there's a lot of work that gets this to this point. So thank you for that. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Pro Tem Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Councilmember Eric Sangal?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda is I-6, Troy Family Aquatic Center, and that will be introduced by Robert J. Bruner, Assistant City Manager. Hi, Bob.
Good evening. We're going to share a presentation with city council tonight. So I have IT bring that up.
Mayor? Well, while Assistant City Manager Bruner is calling it up, I just would like to just put a little statement out there that city administration clearly would never propose changes on the Civic Center camp, citizen engagement process in general, any place on there. I just want to make sure that
Uh, citizen engagement process in general, any place on there. I just want to make sure that council hears that and the residents hear it because some of the comments said that, you know, we're trying to bring the civic center plan back into full swing and that is not the case. Um, the, the old civic center plan is, um, dormant for the lack of other terminology. And I'll turn it back over to, uh, Mr. Bruner for the presentation.
And just as a quick, quick follow-up, I appreciate that, City Manager Miller, and certainly something that might come up in some comments from council a little bit, but we do appreciate you, uh, making that statement to start things off. So thank you. And Bob, it's up to you.
Thanks. Um, so tonight I'm going to present a brief, uh, financial analysis of the Troy Family Aquatic Center. Um, before I want to do, uh, before I do, I want to, um, thank both our CFO, Rob Melzick for his help and, um, Beth Taschek from the city manager's office. Um, we don't have 30 years of financial information in our financial computer system. Um, few organizations do. And we had our, uh, comprehensive annual financial report scanned back to 1996, but Beth went in the office last week to scan, um, uh, that, uh, 95 and, and prior, so we could pull this information together for you tonight. Uh, so go ahead, next slide please. So, um, we've talked a little bit about the, the history of the aquatic center already tonight. It was open to the public in, um, 1991 and I, I think it's difficult for a lot of us to imagine what the city government was like in Troy in 1991. Uh, at that time, that was, uh, before proposal A of 1994, um, changed property taxation in the state of Michigan. Um, the city was levying five mils for operations and five mils for capital. Uh, today we levy less than eight for those two combined. Um, and basically the, the city was having a hard time funding operations for, on five mils, but had a lot of money to spend on capital with that five mils levied for capital and, uh, built the aquatic center for, uh, a total of about 42.2 million dollars at the time. And it was, uh, when the aquatic center opened, an enterprise fund was created to account, uh, for the operations of the aquatic center. And an enterprise fund is intended, uh, to be self-supporting. It's a, it's a business-like activity where users pay fees for services rather than taxes. So, um, certainly tax dollars did fund the building of the aquatic center, uh, but they do not, uh, fund the operations. That's, uh, the, the user fees. And this is similar to the city's other enterprise funds like our golf courses where if you play golf, you pay to play. Water and sewer fund, which, um, most everybody in the city is, is probably, uh, familiar with, uh, as well. So next slide please. So this is a, a kind of a brief snapshot of, of where we're at. Um, so while the, the aquatic center fund has about $250,000 in cash and investments, it owes the general fund about $180,000. And it has owed the general fund money, um, going all the way back to the second year, uh, after it was open. So its unrestricted net position is only about $67,000. And those numbers, that's not a math problem. Um, 180 or 250 minus 180 is not 67. Um, these are just kind of some financial highlights to give you an idea of, um, what's going on with this, uh, fund, what kind of money it has on hand, what it owes to the general fund. But there's, there's some other liabilities and details here. But, um, the bottom line is, uh, it's, it's got about $67,000 that's unrestricted. Next slide. So, uh, the, the reason that we're, um, discussing this tonight is that the aquatic center is not generating enough income to pay, um, for the reinvestments that it needs. Um, it, it's 30 years old, uh, it, it needs substantial reinvestments. Um, a lot of those reinvestments have been deferred and have now become urgent. Um, and so the city council has to decide, um, whether or not to make those reinvestments. And in all likelihood, that decision will have implications for the general fund. Um, but we'll talk more about that when we get to the end. Next slide please. Next slide. Going to go into a little more detail on how we got here. So this is what I was talking about, um, having to pull those old, uh, comprehensive annual financial reports, um, to get these numbers all the way back to the fiscal year that ended in 1992. So, um, this is the, uh, change in fund net position. Um, again, the aquatic center fund is a enterprise fund, so some of the terminology in enterprise funds is a little different than the other governmental funds. Um, but basically, like I said, you know, the aquatic center, uh, was built, uh, total of about 4.2 million dollars. Um, and, uh, it depreciates every year. And this shows that it depreciated more than, uh, the revenues, uh, were generated. So, um, the city hasn't funded depreciation. It hasn't set money aside to, um, you know, fully replace and, uh, restore the facility, uh, as we go. Um, and, and so you see the, the red lines are years when the change in that position was negative and the, the green lines are years, uh, when it was positive. Next slide. This one's a little easier to understand because we take the depreciation out of it. This is basically, uh, just shows, um, you know, how much money came into the aquatic center fund in the year and how much did we spend? And so here we have many more positive years, um, uh, than, uh, especially more recently. Um, but that's also probably because the city wasn't investing in capital those years. Um, because if capital expenses, uh, had been made, um, then you'd see a little less green on this table. Next slide please. So this is the aquatic center fund balance, um, which is a little, uh, deceptive perhaps because most of what's in the balance is actually undepreciated capital assets. It's, it's the aquatic center itself. It's the, the equipment and so forth. It's not money that we can spend. Next slide. So, this is, um, this slide is attempting to, uh, to, to show, um, quite a bit in kind of one snapshot. So the blue line, like the last, uh, table, is showing, um, the net investment in capital assets, the undepreciated costs. Um, the orange line is actually the fund's, um, net position. And you can see that the fund has had a negative net position, um, almost the entire time since, uh, the aquatic center was, was opened in 1992. And the gray line is money that the aquatic center fund has borrowed from the general fund over time. So you see in the, the second year after it was opened, um, it's, the aquatic center fund's net position became negative, so it basically had to borrow money from the general fund, uh, in order to keep operating. Um, and with the exception of a few years more recently, uh, it's been negative, um, uh, basically, uh, for the first 20 years. Next slide please. So summarize, uh, what we saw on those tables. The change in net position, including depreciation, was negative 26 out of 29 years. Um, the net expenses excluding depreciation was actually positive 17 out of those 29 years. Um, but if, if you take those 29 years, the average annual, uh, income was less than $32,000. Um, and the income during that whole period was less than a million dollars. Um, certainly not enough to, um, uh, you know, rebuild or restore the facility. Um, like I said, built at a cost of about 4.2 million dollars in 1991, about $7 million, uh, today. Um, again, unrestricted, uh, net position's been negative 24 out of 29 years. And, um, the aquatic center fund has owed the general fund money, uh, for 28 out of those 29 years. So that number has gone up and down over the years, um, but it's currently at about $180,000 and it, and it's been that way for several years. Um, fortunately, right now, the aquatic center fund has enough cash and investments to repay the general fund, that $180,000 that it owes. Um, but if we move forward, uh, that may not be the case. Next slide please. All right. So the decision council is going to discuss tonight is to proceed, um, with a pool repair project. Um, there's more details on that in the, in the memo. Um, there's a $125,000, uh, plastering project that was initially approved, uh, back in February and was postponed due to COVID, uh, but there's a, a total, um, projects needed to reopen in 2021, uh, that are estimated to cost about $285,000. So, um, given the amount of money that the, uh, aquatic center generates and the amount of money that it already owes the general fund, it seems unlikely, um, that the, uh, if, if the general fund were to, um, cover the difference between what the, uh, repairs are going to cost and what the aquatic center fund can pay, it seems unlikely that the general fund, uh, would ever be able to recover that money from the aquatic center fund. And then the alternative, um, as has been discussed, uh, closing the aquatic center and, uh, investigating other options, uh, to replace or update the aquatic center in the future. Um, and preserving the, the money that the, uh, the, the general fund and the aquatic center fund have now for those future plans. And I think with the next slide will bring us to questions and answers. Happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
All right. Thank you, Bob. Um, I, I only have about six hours of material to get through tonight on this slide. It's a, uh, it's been an interesting week. I, 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 I want to start with, you know, last meeting or when the agenda came out before the last meeting, you know, that report was in there basically saying that city management, in fact, it did say city management intended not to proceed with the repairs and which would mean the aquatic center would be closed for the foreseeable future. Um, it really struck a chord with me in that I thought, uh, this is not what our community wants from us, at least at the very level of they want to be involved and know that these decisions are coming or happening before they find out too late. Um, and I, I was right. I, um, but Tuesday morning after the meeting, I put a post out on Facebook and there's been an overwhelming response, not just there, but on the city's Facebook, on other group Facebook pages, um, Channel 4 News has picked up a piece on it. It is, um, you know, next door, if I haven't said that already, other members, um, social media. You see, we had ex- uh, extreme amounts of public comment this evening that, um, were all, I mean, almost all of them that spoke about the aquatic center were very, very favorable toward the aquatic center as were the, uh, over 100, 150 plus comments I received on my Facebook posts about it. The emails, the dozens of emails that I received. Um, full disclosure, I think there were three or four total of the couple hundred that were not in favor of the investment in the aquatic center. Um, and I, it, but when I saw that kind of response, I knew that, okay, we do need to discuss this more. And that was the point of the last meeting. And I, I guess I, you know, I have a, a lot of thoughts on it and, as they relate to questions and, um, I'm a strong, strong believer in, you know, council and manager of formal government work well together because we, we look at the policy options of the city, you look at the day-to-day operations of the city and those are supposed to work very well together. We've obviously seen some issues in the past in the city that we've worked through and we're at a different point now, the different council and different management team. Um, and yet my, I, I, I do have a question that I have to start with. I, I guess I don't, I don't understand where, how we got to this point to where it, city management had made a decision about a, a contract that we'd already approved back in February and then again reaffirmed in June with the, by re-appropriating funds the next fiscal year to where we got that memo and a report at the end of our last agenda that said, you're not going to move forward. So I, I originally last week, we were told that you just discovered that they couldn't do the repairs in the spring. It was going to have to be this fall. But then today, a council member asked a question about that and the question was, when did you find out that it would have to be this fall? And the answer was just one word, July. So I'm struggling as a, the mayor of the city, working with council members and the city management who I greatly value and have worked really well with, trying to figure out how we got to this point. And, you know, I want to, I guess, uh, ensure first of all that this kind of thing, this doesn't happen again because we know that, we know in city manager Miller, you mentioned at the beginning of this presentation, we know how much the community or the civic center property means to the people of the city. And when we're talking about any changes or doing anything major there, um, we know that community engagement is key. So I, if you, if you or Bob wanted to speak to that, I, I'm, it's, I'm, I understand that's a difficult question to answer. I just want to make sure that moving forward, certainly, we're not going to be faced with something like this again, but if you wanted to speak a little bit to the reasoning, um, I'd appreciate that.
Mayor, I can start off, um, you know, first of all, um, I, any information I provided to you council is the best information I got from my staff. So if that changed, I don't know exactly what happened. But, um, I think overall what happened with the situation is that there, if you look back to the previous city manager, they were, one of the things that that city manager didn't like was bringing negative things to city council. And I think that this, I don't know exactly why, but this issue should have been known sooner. It's right in our caffir. It's right there, you know, it, it, it sort of unfortunately organically came to a realization with the new assistant city manager and a new chief financial officer. And, um, ultimately from our standpoint, you know, the, the system worked in that we laid a possibility to city council via report. City council didn't want to go in that direction and we're meeting and informing you. So I, I think it's working. Um, I understand that we probably would want to address this sooner and earlier and will give every effort to with any other issue in the future. Uh, um, this was a very unique situation that came up. Bob, I don't know if you want to add anything related to the information you got from recreation regarding the actual pool?
Yeah, this is not ideal, um, by any stretch of the imagination. Um, we, we, you know, like I said, the, the aquatic center, um, has been kind of, you know, operating, uh, on a very thin margin for a very long time. Um, COVID-19, the pandemic, uh, really gave the fund a financial shock that was more than it could, um, handle. And then, you know, with the, uh, the original plan was to have the plaster contract done in spring of 2020. Um, that was delayed and council did reappropriate the, the funds. But then after the contractor told us that they, um, you know, wouldn't be able to do the con, uh, perform the work next spring, um, then, uh, you know, recreation staff, um, came to me and, uh, what, you know, was asking, you know, what should we, uh, do about this? So, um, you know, me being, uh, fairly new to the organization, still, uh, it's June of last year and, and Rob being even newer, um, it took us some time to kind of get together and look at the situation. Um, uh, in, in order to assess it and then, you know, bring forward that, um, uh, uh, report that we did, uh, last week. So, um, you know, you, you've seen the kind of public engagement that we've done with the, with the library and, and other things more recently. And those are the kind of things that we want to continue, but, um, this was just a situation where, uh, there wasn't, um, time to, um, uh, to do that. And, you know, our, our hand was being forced by, um, factors outside of our control.
I, I appreciate that and I know that I, that's, I mean, I understand COVID has played a big role in how things have been addressed over the past several months as well and, as well. And, um, I know that it's, um, I, I know that it's tough for a number of reasons. So the, the good news that comes out of this, in my opinion, is that we, we just had an extremely robust community engagement session over this past week, um, with, um, all kinds of responses and people showing their support. Um, and people showing their support. That, that good news also leads us, this council, to have to figure out what we are going to do and how we can move forward. I have every intention this evening of seeking consensus from council to authorize these repairs so that we can make plans to open in 2021. That's my understanding what would be needed from us this evening, because we've already approved that plaster repair. And I just wanted to talk, the other thing, you know, we are the policy-setting body of this city, and, you know, one of the policies we've talked a lot about, or we've started to talk about, especially this year in our strategy session back in the beginning of the year, was, you know, some issues that kind of relate to this. You know, this Aquatic Center isn't a, it's a community asset, we know that, we love it, we heard from residents, new and old, that love it. We've talked about, you know, so where do we, is it okay for the general fund to supplement the expenses of some of these community assets? And that's something I think we on council need to continue to look at and address as it relates to everything in this community. We've talked about it as it relates to the community center specifically, that, going back to creative endeavors, frankly, is where that conversation started most recently. So I'm very anxious, in a good way, to have that conversation and to work so we can move forward. I think there's also no question that we need to have a really long, hard look at what to do with this Aquatic Center in the foreseeable, not next year or even the next year after that, but over the next, you know, over this next decade, what does that look like? And, you know, ideally, that gets looked at as part of the, an overall Civic Center property discussion relating to community parks, community gathering spaces. And let me be very clear, I'm in no way talking about privatized development at all. Certainly, we want the community to be involved, and we've heard pretty loud and clear that most of that property should be utilized for parks and for community purposes. So I, in my, to lay it out there, my, my goal tonight is to fund these repairs and the maintenance that we need, recognizing that the enterprise fund is going to be depleted after almost 30 years, I think that that's not such a bad thing to do. We've had a really great run of it. And recognize that we're going to have to make some changes to how it operates if we want to keep it as more self-sufficient or closer to the self-sufficient line. And, you know, I think we need to start a series of meetings about that over the next several months and year, frankly, and look at that plan overall. So I had a really, a good talk, and I know I've been talking a lot, so I'll let everyone else talk and have a chance in just a moment. But I had a long, good talk with Frank Gersten-Ecker today, who was the city manager when the Aquatic Center was constructed. And, you know, I mean, he flat out told me, I don't think he'd mind me sharing, he said, you know, "We never intended that to be fully self-sufficient." I mean, that, those were his words. But he talked about the value of social capital and what it does for a community to have something like that, and whether or not, you know, again, that whole, the policy does something need to be always self-sufficient if it's getting a greater benefit and use from the community as a whole. So I am, I personally have been a big fan of the Aquatic Center, but I was trying to put that aside because I realized that, you know, we make, we make decisions for everybody. I know several of you have good experiences of it. And then I was extremely pleased to hear, you know, a couple hundred people weigh in and tell me how much they love the Aquatic Center, how much they want us to support it as well. So this, to me, is active and good community engagement. This is about transparency in our decision-making. I don't want anyone to ever feel like we made a decision without giving them ample opportunity to weigh in, and I think that that's something we've accomplished this week. I recognize city management and Director Bo, there are going to be, you know, hard conversations and difficult work that's going to need to be done if we are able, if we're going to continue operating the Aquatic Center as is. So I know that puts a lot of pressure on you, and I want you to know that we're, I'm here to support you and reach out with the community. And I, we had a couple people in our public comment who, you know, shared their willingness to be involved in conversations. And I, and I know it's hard to, we're in COVID right now, so it's hard to go back to some of those traditional community engagement sessions. But Bob, you're right, you did a fantastic job with the library, Millage Community Engagement, they were well-received and well-attended, and I'd love to see us continue some of that as we move forward. And I know that that's been the city's plan, as is the community survey, to address some of these issues. So, that said, I guess I will be seeking consensus to move forward with the repairs and planning to open next year, but I don't have to do that yet. I'm happy to let anybody else ask questions or make any comments at this point. City Manager Miller, looks like you raised your hand first.
In the late Seminole, we did provide two resolutions for council. One to authorize us to move forward and do citizen engagement, and one not to do that.
You did? I have not seen those, so my apologies.
Is it, well, it should be part of the late Seminole. Let me see.
The middle that, okay. Well, then, I want to move one of those resolutions. Well, does anybody have any questions? Recognizing that we, if there's a resolution to be moved, then typically discussion would be during that part, but we can certainly do both. Yeah.
Unfortunately, it appears that the, the resolutions are, you can't access the, via the agenda item, the late Seminole. I can't.
Okay, I don't, I didn't see those, that's why I didn't mention those specifically. So, how should we handle that? Is there, I mean, does anybody have a copy of those? Do you have a copy of them printed out?
I have it, Mr. Mayor. I can transmit it to the city clerk, and she can read it, they're very short.
Okay, is that okay with council? Would you mind, if we read those into the record just so we can hear them? Or we can continue the conversation after that? Councilmember Hoderick?
I would prefer to just read the one that gives direction to move forward, I don't need to hear the other one, personally. I don't know how others feel.
For that, is there consensus that we just read one that moves forward? Because City Clerk Dixon needs more to read this evening. In the meantime, I will say, I really am so thankful for all of the residents of our city who took the time to send emails, to call in, to comment on Facebook, to comment on Nextdoor, Instagram, Twitter, I mean, it was everywhere, and it's nice to see the community rally together on something, even the recognizing there's, you know, it's a part of, there's a much bigger picture to look at, but to see the support of what facility that we've had for almost 30 years is very heartwarming. City Clerk?
Mayor, I have the resolution. Resolve that Troy City Council hereby directs city staff to proceed with the pool repairs contract awarded on February 10th, 2020, Resolution 2020-02-038. Resolve that Troy City Council hereby directs cities, oh, you just want the, the proceed with pool repairs, resolution, correct?
Was there community engagement included on one of those?
No.
In the language? No, okay, I wasn't sure. Okay. Well, I'd like to move that resolution as just written to the record by City Clerk Dixon.
Support.
Moved by the chair, supported by Councilmember Hoderick, that we approved the resolution to proceed forward with the pool repairs as approved back in February, as written to the record by City Clerk Dixon. Discussion. Mayor Portman-Hamilton?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to everyone, all the 87 people and hundreds of people online that have responded to this. I was born and raised here, so I know about the Aquatic Center, and like, I'm a numbers guy, so if you look back in 1991, it was stated by Assistant City Manager Bob Bruner that they spent $4.2 million, I think out of the capital fund, to finance the building of the Aquatic Center. In today's dollars, that's about $8 million, inflation-adjusted. So, and the Aquatic Center has been operating for 29 years, so that essentially means that council 29 years ago was already subsidizing the Aquatic Center by $275 a year for their capital costs. So us approving 285K to subsidize the capital cost is kind of doing the same thing that council 29 years ago did, but they did it for a much longer time scale. So to me, I don't think this is really differing than, is much different than what has, than how the Aquatic Center has already operated. We subsidized the capital of it years ago, and if you look at the operating expenses, for 29 years, it had a little bit of a deficit, but really, it almost sustained itself operating-wise for 29 years. And it's not, this isn't like a business, this is to bring value to our community. To me, it's clearly bringing substantial value to our community. I think we need a very elaborate discussion, as the mayor spoke about, to figure out the long-term future of this, how we want it to evolve, do we want to add a splash bed to it, do we want to enhance it more? What does our community want? What is our community yearning for? What is the region yearning for? And I think that's a worthwhile discussion to have in the future. We're also talking about the library, Library Millage Passing, but Mayor Baker made a lot of good comments during the discussion on the library about the future of the library building, too. And I think both of those discussions go hand in hand. We're talking about paying off all these bonds right now, and lowering our bond rates, bond rates are incredibly low, so if we were to do long-term investments in the Aquatic Center, long-term investments in the library now with a city with a AAA bond rating, an incredibly good financial condition, is a good time to start having those discussions over the next few years. And so I definitely will be, you definitely have my support, Mayor Baker, on authorizing these repairs, and I'm looking forward to those conversations in the future.
Thank you. Great outlook on the financial aspect of that. Councilmember Erickson-Gault?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, one question, and again, I apologize for my ignorance of how enterprise funds work because it's nothing I ever dealt with before I came to council, and accounting and numbers are not my forte. But is there any ability for the council to forgive the money that the Aquatic Center owes the general fund?
City Manager Miller?
I would like to see if Chief Financial Officer Rob Melzak could provide some guidance.
Where are you, Rob? There you are.
So I believe that we can have that given, but I have to research because I've never had that in any of the, as far as that I've dealt with.
All right, just to clarify, the sound was a little ruffled, but I believe you said you haven't, you don't have a direct answer right now, but you'll do a little research to clarify whether or not that can be accomplished. I think that's what you said.
That's correct.
Appreciate it.
And along similar lines, it's, does the council have the authority to replenish the operating fund for the Aquatic Center?
Better put, or another way of looking at that, I think, is could we make a capital investment into their fund as a one-time?
Correct, yeah.
To give them a little, like a, a bigger savings, let's say. Does anyone want to answer that? City Attorney Bloom?
Well.
Or, City Manager Miller?
Well, yeah, I just wanted to say that, yes, there, there are some options that you do have. I mean, enterprise funds, basically, it's a separate accounting of it, and, and so I think it's important that we keep that accounting. But city council can decide what, that this is a public fund, a public, something that they want to spend their money on. So we will find a way to do what it is that council is looking to do.
Is there anything required of us, sorry, is there anything required of us other than authorizing those, the repairs? Is, and is my understanding that that money will be lent from the general fund to the Aquatic Center Fund to do that, to make those payments? Is that, is anything we're doing tonight make that transfer allowable? You understand my question? Or do we need to take additional action? Assistant City Manager Bruner?
No additional action is required right now because the Aquatic Center Fund already has about $250,000 in cash, so that includes the $180,000 that owes the general fund. So CFO Melzak and I were talking about this earlier, and if the Aquatic Center Fund depleted its cash reserves down to the point where it needed more cash from the general fund, then that might require council action, but neither one of us have ever done that before either, so we, we weren't sure as of today what the process was for that. But for these, for the plaster contract, $125,000, that money's already in the Aquatic Center Fund, so there's no need for an immediate transfer.
Councilmember Erickson-Gault, sorry to interrupt.
And then my final question is, is there any way that the Aquatic Center could be restructured so that it is not an enterprise fund?
Question.
And we'll look into that as well, that's, that's part of the whole research.
Okay, great, thank you. And I, and I, that's fine, because I'm not asking these questions for something that we're going to do tonight or even tomorrow, but as we look at this situation, we have something that's set up as an enterprise fund that appears to me like it really shouldn't. What I'm hearing from people is they don't see it as a money-making operation, what they see it as is as a public good, something that the city does for the benefit of the, of the residents. And I think that it was, it would probably a little bit surprising to a lot of people in Troy to think that, that it is, that the way it's structured is, is to be a money-making operation. And, and this plays into a comment I wanted to make is that I wanted to send some support for our city managers and our, our financial manager. What, the public doesn't seem, I mean, I get where they're coming from, I totally get where they're coming from, I love the Aquatic Center, I've been there, my daughter had a birthday party there, too, it's a beautiful place. But what our, what I see our city managers doing here is trying to advise us of, of a impending financial crisis with this enterprise fund, similar to what the city faced years ago with our golf courses, and, which are also enterprise funds. And so we have to keep in mind the accounting end of it when we're making these decisions, we can't just say, you know, like, what's happening here with the Aquatic Center is not, cannot be equated to the library. Somebody made a comment during one of the public comments of, "To heck with the library," so to speak, and, you know, I'm paraphrasing what the person said, "and, you know, invest in the Aquatic Center." Well, they're not really the same things because of the accounting, how they're accounted for. And so we have to be very conscientious of not just what the public wants and do our best to deliver what they want, but we also have to keep in mind how, from a fiduciary standpoint, we have an obligation as council to, to be fiduciaries, and if we don't, we'll lose that AAA rating. So I want to keep these things in mind, although I wholeheartedly support doing whatever maintenance is necessary to make sure that, assuming we can have an open Aquatic Center in 2021, that COVID doesn't get in the way of that, I want us to do that maintenance, and I, so I support this resolution. But I also want us to look forward in the future because we can't, and I think anybody who's, who's been in the situation where they've had a business that's losing money or something similar, they know you just can't, just can't keep dumping money into this situation and, and hope it'll get better. You need to think for the future and figure out how we're going to be able to fund this within the constraints of our budget. So, so that's, that's where I'm coming from. I totally support keeping this Aquatic Center open as long as feasible, but I also want us to have, as Mayor Baker said, I want us to have some community engagement sessions, I want us to do some deep dives into figuring out how we're going to get this operation in a situation where it's not only providing the benefit that everybody in Troy expects, but doing so in a way that's financially sound. So that's where I'm coming from, but I do, I absolutely do support the resolution.
Great, great questions, Councilmember Erickson-Gault, and comments as well. Councilmember Abraham, I saw your hand go up next.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. In 2008, the entire nation was going through the Great Recession. And city revenues began to dwindle after that. It really started becoming noticeable in 2010. And I bring this up because now in 2020, we're just finally seeing city revenues close to what they were in 2008 and 2010. And that's not adjusted for inflation. It's not net present value. This is back to the same dollars, dollar for dollar in 2008. We're still recovering from the Great Recession 12 years ago. Now we find ourselves in a pandemic. We've gotten through Wave One. We're anticipating Wave Two. We don't know what that looks like. You know, maybe we'll, we'll be fortunate and not have it impact our economy as greatly as it could be. But we do know we aren't going to realize the revenues that we thought we were eight or nine months ago. And we don't know what our future fiscal outlook is going to be. And I can appreciate the challenges for the next budget cycle. So I say that to residents because I want to give you context for what's going on in our council's minds when we're weighing decisions like this. I want to be clear, I'm very supportive of quality of life services that the city has to offer. I do value the Aquatic Center. I want it to keep running, and I will be supporting this resolution. But this enterprise fund needs a serious infusion of cash. And from what I can hear, there's really two main sources to do that. One is outlays from the general fund, which is risky without knowing the full impact of the pandemic. Fees are also the way that the, the fund is infused with cash. And I do understand there's going to be some increases in fees next year, assuming the resolution passes and the pandemic does not prevent it from opening again. But fees won't get us to being able to make capital outlays like we're seeing, addressing the memo, you know, easily $500,000 over the next couple of years. So trying to think creatively, but still staying within the boundaries of all the financial accounting rules and laws that the state has. You know, maybe there's things that we can look at like public-private partnerships or corporate sponsorships that can help mitigate some of these costs. And I'd be very interested to see if there, there's anything maybe a little bit non-traditional, but perfectly legal that we can do to help offset some of these costs on an ongoing basis. Because I am very concerned about the general fund and using it because, in a, in a way like this for operating expenses. Because as we just heard, it does put our AAA bond rating at risk. It's, it's the reason why we have a dedicated millage and have had a dedicated millage for the past 10 years. And hopefully that will pass and that won't be an issue. But that is a very significant concern for me that, that we really need to get our arms around within the next few months.
Thank you, Councilmember Abraham. Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to share my thoughts. I completely support us moving forward with these repairs. I did spend the weekend doing a good deal of deliberating, texting, speaking with residents. Had a conversation with former Mayor Gene Stein on Sunday. So thank you, Gene, for your comments today. And I thank all the residents who have submitted comments through the public comment function as well as through social media. That's, that is essential. So for me, as I deliberated, and if I were to start with the numbers and if the decision was based on the numbers alone, we know they're not good. If we proceed with this resurfacing repair, as we're going to, this will kick into motion all the repairs that do need to be done to open the pool in May 2021. We will deplete the Aquatic Center Fund in half by 50%. In other words, it is like your savings just disappearing, half of it disappearing in a year. And the Aquatic Center will run out of money in the next year and a half to two years, as we've been saying. That said, the money for the repairs have been set aside. The plan all along was to proceed with the repairs. And doing or not doing the repairs does not solve the long-term financial challenges of the Aquatic Center, which we're all talking about. That is a separate topic of conversation. So I do recognize, though, that not proceeding with the repairs could provide more money for an updated Aquatic Center in a couple of years. I did have some residents, in all fairness, who did say that this could be a good time as any to take a pause, especially with the uncertainties of COVID and whether or not we can open in 2021 and given social distancing and having to cut in half the number of people who can attend. But that said, again, there are so many ifs and uncertainties. And overall, public opinion, from what I've heard today, what I heard on social media, and as I talked to my neighbors over the past week, public, the public overwhelmingly supports doing all we can to keep the Aquatic Center open in 2021 and going forward. And yes, while the numbers are not good, I'm at this table because I promise to protect our civic assets and believing they are the social infrastructure that brings our great community together. It's how we create togetherness. And I also promise to respect our residents and their opinions. And their issues and voices on this matter have been clear. They want us to do the repairs. And also, I believe the other factor is, I think more than ever in this environment of COVID, people are concerned about quality of life. This is, as we were saying, a quality of life issue. And they want us to protect our assets that make Troy that great place to live, to be able to, to keep alive the quality of life that we've been struggling to hold on to in COVID. And so that's why I do want to direct the city to do repairs. What I would like to ask, as a number of you have said, is I do want us to really consider our strategic goal setting that we do every year. And I would like to suggest that we move it up, that we try to do it by the end of this year to really set those objectives. We call them strategies, but they're really objectives. And really set those priorities for 2021. And put this at the top of those priorities that we need to have a real, robust conversation about the financial future of the Aquatic Center to find a long-term, sustainable solution. And I know I've even had different ideas rolling around in my head. And I'm sure that, and all of us have put ideas out there today. And I do look forward to this being on the community survey that I know the city plans. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga. Yes, the strategies and the, the, the planning for the future is always something we need to look at. And it's my understanding, City Manager Miller, that you're planning on moving up that process earlier so we're not waiting for the last, or later in the budget process. So it sounds like we're in good shape for that one. We'll definitely add that as a conversation. Additional comments, discussion? Councilmember Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor. Basically, I do agree with the sentiments of pretty much all of the rest of council. I kind of view this in two separate parts, kind of what we want, what we plan to do in the immediate future and kind of the longer-term outlook of what we want to do with this property. I think we all pretty much, it sounds like we have consensus as far as what we want to do in the immediate future. I think that the residents have definitely made their voices heard. We were elected to represent the voices of our residents. And we have to respect, you know, their opinion and their views and their wants and their wishes. And I think it's very clear that we should move ahead with the project as of right now. Obviously, for the longer term, there is a larger question that becomes a lot more complicated. But it does need to be answered. And I think we should definitely start the process sooner rather than later. Because one of the questions that I asked is, what are some of the anticipated capital projects moving forward? So right now, it's resurfacing, you know, the pool. But they kind of said, you know, by 2024, there's about a half a million dollars worth of other projects that maybe need to be done to the Aquatic Center as well. So this may be an issue that continues to present itself in the very near future. So I do think that we really should be proactive about addressing these, these issues and really thinking about what we want to do. And really, we have to engage the community. We absolutely have to understand what they want and, and how, what they want to see for, for, you know, in the community center area. Because it is such a, I mean, this is basically our downtown. So it's incredibly important to our community what we do with this area. But I do think that we need to start having these discussions now so that, you know, we don't keep having this in 2021, 2022, 2023, you know, when, when these other projects present themselves. So those are my comments.
Thank you very much. Very insightful, as always. Additional, Councilmember Hoderick?
I just wanted to share a little bit of background from, I think it was eight years ago, when, seven years ago, when we were already talking about the capital needs that the Aquatic Center was going to have, the library building. And that was the genesis of talking about how we might look at private-public partnerships. But we proceeded down a path, and when I say we, our former city manager proceeded down a path very fast that left the community behind. It left our residents behind. And when we speak of engagement, that type of engagement where we're actually trying to, to find solutions that make sense. We all know what we want. What, what is it that we can do with a millage cap in place that was put in back in the mid-2000s with Headley in place that can hold us back? This is why we need a library millage, is for these kinds of issues that we're facing with things like the Troy Family Aquatic Center. We lost, you know, a number of years of time because that engagement did not have, happen properly. And I guess I say to the residents that are watching, this is a council that values engagement. This is a city manager and a city administration that prioritizes engagement now. Thank you so much for the, the quick start engagement that had to happen this past week where we got affirmation for a decision that we made in February 2020, pre-pandemic, that it's still the right thing to do, that you guys stand with us as we make this investment and, and make this, you know, make this a priority for our pool. I think, I think the one comment, hashtag keep the pool. I think, I think we're all there. And protecting it and making the investments in it that we need to make while we do engagement. And, and we're having to start over. So we lost several years there. We needed to be infusing into this Aquatic Center for a number of years now. And with this decision, this gives a policy direction to staff, you know, to say, yes, help make this happen. You're looking at a woman whose kids are grown, and I still would sneak in. I think, I didn't get there last year, but the year before, I went to the Aquatic Center on my own to enjoy the slides. I love the place. I do think it's an asset. I had a gut sense that the community thought it was an asset. Now I know, now I know because of the process we just went through. And we each have our lane here. City administration gives us a straightforward sense of what's going on. They try to raise a flag for us when we might want to take a look at things. City council then says, gee, we want to take a look at this thing. And then the lane for our residents, our fellow residents, is to help give us that input. And in many ways, this worked right now. We had a chance to make sure all the voices were heard, set a policy. Yes, we're making an investment with our eyes wide open about what it achieves and what it doesn't for now. And I really appreciate the dialogue. And I just, I just know that this council and the city manager, I really want the residents to understand, we're in a very different place. We will not be tearing down assets that you value without seeking your input. We will not be making difficult decisions like that without seeking input, without getting creative. And it's just awesome to see how many people stepped up. It's a very different drumbeat than there was 10 years ago in terms of how people feel about our quality of life venues and the value. This is a family-friendly community that needs this. And, and we're hearing that loud and clear. And it was great to hear that drumbeat tonight. So thank you, Mayor Baker, for, you know, kind of doing the quick and dirty engagement. And I look forward to doing the surveys and the more robust engagement down the road, even as we make this decision to proceed. Thank you.
Thanks, Ellen. You kind of covered some things that I was going to add on. But again, to the community, we are, this council, we are here to listen to you. The takeaway is that we really do want to hear from you and know these issues and have them be part of our decision-making. And yes, the hard numbers from city management that also need to weigh in. I mean, that is the, as Councilmember Erickson Galt talked about, that's the first. That's the difficult, the job for us is balancing those two interests because we represent you in what you want and what you need. But we also have a fiduciary obligation to, to make sure we can do it so it doesn't hurt you down the line, right? I mean, that's the, that's always the check. So is there any further discussion on this item? All right, the vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Hoderick? Yes. Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Councilmember Erickson Galt?
Yes.
Mayor Person Hamilton?
Yes.
Motion carries, and I forgot to say one last thing. I do want to thank city management for this past week. Bob mentioned at the beginning, Beth, going into scan additional records. You have answered a tremendous amount of questions from us over the past few days especially. And you've really put a lot of work and effort into preparing for tonight. So I do thank you for that because it did make the decision-making and process easier for us and gave us a fuller picture of what we needed to look at. So thank you for that. That work does not go unnoticed and know that it's very valuable to us. Sure, okay. Next on the agenda is I-7, Temporary Enclosures, a resolution to permit temporary enclosures to expand seating capacity during COVID-19. I see Brett Savadon, who's been patiently waiting for this point in the agenda. So take it away, Brett.
Good evening, Mayor Baker and City Council. I thought it would be easier making a presentation after 10:30 at night from my home than in council chambers. It's not any easier, just in case anyone was curious. So thank you for, for hearing me out this evening. So as, as we're all aware, some of the governor's executive orders that were intended to protect Michigan residents from COVID negatively impacted businesses in Troy. And specifically, I refer to seating capacity limitations which have impacted revenue for restaurants and other businesses. And numerous Troy restaurant owners have reached out to members of city council. I know Mr. Mayor Baker, excuse me, had some conversations with, with a restaurateur and did some research on what other communities are doing, which we actually used and it was very helpful in our, in what we did for this item. But they also reached out to myself and city management and, and the city attorney, asking if there were options available for adding indoor seating through use of temporary enclosures over the patio when the weather gets cold, essentially extending the square footage of heated living space for restaurants. Now, the zoning orders permits temporary enclosures, but with restrictions. And these restrictions include limitations on hours of operation, limitations on duration, and a requirement that temporary enclosures are permitted only during periods of construction or for special events. And the restrictions make it impossible for business owners to use temporary enclosures from fall through the winter and into spring when the outdoor patios are not usable due to inclement weather. So city administration prepared a resolution for your consideration. And the resolution directs city administration to not enforce the zoning ordinance restrictions I listed earlier. And by not enforcing these restrictions, the city will provide relief to restaurants by allowing them to expand seating capacity by temporarily enclosing their patio areas. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Brett. Any questions for Director Savadon? Councilmember Abraham?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to clarify, we wouldn't, the resolution would be to not enforce those sections of the charter while the declared state of emergency in Michigan is in place. It's not an indefinite decision, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. It's to not enforce the zoning ordinance provisions related to those restrictions I mentioned. You said you, I believe you incorrectly said the word charter.
Oh, sorry. My apologies.
And, and just, just to further state that the emergency powers, this isn't emergency, a state of emergency, you've declared it. So that gives you additional authority to provide this temporary relief.
Quick follow-up to that. What would happen if it's the middle of winter and the declaration of emergency or the emergency declaration is gone? Would we then be, does this sunset and then you are supposed to enforce that and would require a business who still has potential limited capacity issues? I guess if there's no emergency declaration, then there's no capacity issue. So I've just answered my own question. Look at that. Very good. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, would you like to move the resolution anyway? Councilmember Brooks?
I would like to move. I probably should have maybe waited. I would like to move I-7 temporary enclosures as printed in the agenda.
Support. Moved by Councilmember Brooks, supported by Mayor Person Hamilton, that we approve I-7 temporary enclosures, a resolution, a resolution to permit temporary enclosures to expand seating capacity during COVID-19 as printed in the agenda. Any further discussion?
I'll just say I'm very thankful that we can offer this support to our restaurants who we know are going to be, the temperature's already shifted. I'm sure they're beginning to see the effects of not having that extra capacity available right now. So thankful to do this and we'll make sure the restaurants who are using outdoor dining now or know this is available, assuming it passes tonight.
The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Councilmember Erickson Galt?
Yes.
Mayor Person Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Savadon, for your presentation. Appreciate it. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Does anybody like to pull anything from the consent agenda this evening? Councilmember Hoderick?
Mayor, I would like to move all items on the consent agenda as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilmember Hoderick, supported by Councilmember Abraham, that we approve all items on the consent agenda as printed. Any discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brooks?
Yes.
Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Yes.
Councilmember Erickson Galt?
Yes.
Mayor Person Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes. Motion carries. All items on the consent agenda have been approved this evening. There are no memorandums and future council agenda items this evening. We hit a public comment earlier. There are no council referrals, so we'll move to reports. Any comments on reports this evening? Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Thank you, Mayor. Just two quick things. The first thing I just want to start with is thanking city, city administration for including the report on the Oakland County Parks and Recreation Millage, something that I brought up in the last meeting about whether or not it's true that this millage, if it does pass, if it would provide potentially some grants or some form of funding for, for our own trails. And it looks like it would. And it looks like further information is pending. So just want to thank them for looking into it and look forward to, to hearing more about what it may offer if it does pass. So thank you for that. The second thing I wanted to address is a report around Welcoming America. I was surprised, reading it, that our membership to Welcoming America was not renewed since 2017. I swore that in my time on Global Troy that we had renewed it each year and thought I had some emails to the effect that it was. But for various reasons, it looks like it, it wasn't. But I would love to see consensus from colleagues to consider pursuing one of those membership options. You have, besides individual, the other options that would be relevant to us, some as low as $200 in terms of a membership. I'm not quite sure what's appropriate. And it's something that doesn't need to happen right away. It's something that could happen in a couple of months when we have a new liaison who's on board. But I just want to thank the residents who called in and supported it, especially a good number of former colleagues from the Global Troy Committee, who I know found it a great asset to have this resource and would love to find more ways to be able to share those resources with others. So I just want to put that out there because I would love to really see us renew that membership.
Thank you. And to that point, I think that, I think you probably have consensus to look further into it without knowing the specific membership. I would love to see, I, I'd want to, to renew, I'd want to make sure we could also leverage whatever relationship we have with the organization to see. Because I know, I don't think we really did much of that before, other than having the, the organization membership. But it'd be great to see. I know they offer a lot of different opportunities for our city and what we could do. So I, with the new liaison, that would be something, I think, a great project also. But Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga, so you put your hand back up.
Yes, just to circle back on that, there is a local representative from the Welcoming Michigan chapter, and she did come to at least one or two meetings of Global Troy. So she, we actually did have interaction quite frequently with the representative. And I believe that person also presented to, I believe, when council, when we put it up to council to support that back in 2017, I believe.
I, I have a vague memory of those times. But yes, I do, I do remember something along those lines. But I'd be interested to get re-engaged with that for sure. So is there consensus from council to direct city management to look into it further and maybe come up with a plan? Something? Okay, looks like it. Thank you. Mayor Person Hamilton?
I just wanted to mention the report on O-02B, which is on speed humps, because we were talking about, I believe it was, was it Boyd or was it the street going into Baker Middle School? And, you know, this is something I've thought a lot about. I'm, as an engineer at Ford, I've studied things like this and traffic calming and high-speed traffic through neighborhoods. We always hear from residents knocking on doors. When you knock on doors in a neighborhood that has a really long, straight, wide road, you always hear that, we've heard that from residents on McClure, Alpine, that you always get residents speeding down there. And so I, this report kind of details, you know, where in Troy they do have speed bumps versus a speed hump. A speed hump is longer, so you can still kind of go 15, 20 miles per hour over it. It's not as like intrusive as a speed bump you have in a parking lot where you have to almost come to a complete stop. And they're really useful for traffic calming. And so the only one in the whole city is on Walnut Hill, which I used to live in that neighborhood. So I used to walk my dog there and see it. And I always was confused by it because I never saw any of those in the rest of the city. And I found out that's the only one in the whole city. And so I'm, I'm very interested in us adopting some kind of policy and how we can bring these different areas in the community. Because I do think they would solve a lot of the problems we're having. And I know there's a lot issues that come with it. There's a lot of pros and cons, but I really, for traffic safety, I, I feel like it's something worth pursuing. So I don't know if I need a council consensus for that. Is this something to look into for how we could have a process of how we could add that to different areas and what are the requirements? I know the report kind of talks about how some of the countywide and statewide requirements come to be, but it's something I'm interested in think could be an asset for a community. So I'd like to get more information. Do I have consensus on that to kind of pursue that and see where we can go?
Is, is that something City Manager Miller that can be done in a further report? Or traditionally, after the report, often we used to move towards a study session type issue wanted. I don't know if, if there's an extended report that could be provided to talk about that. I think that would be a, that would be good. But if that's not something you think that could be formulated with enough information to take it to the next level to talk about, I'm open to your thoughts on that.
Mayor and council, my, my thoughts are, is that your consensus is that you would like to look into it. So I think that what we would need to do is go back with the leadership of our city engineer, Bill Houdery, is develop a schematic or an outline of what a program would be, and then bring that back to council for approval. Because
You know, especially what, what other communities have done is always
And, and, and part of it is there's a, a process where people would request and then we would do an analysis. So we, we would want city council's approval and direction officially so that we can have put resources in time to develop a program, which ultimately comes back to city council because there's going to be cost, you know, considerations on who would pay for these speed humps.
And I would imagine it could involve our traffic committee, which is one of our most active committees that deals with a lot of traffic issues. So maybe somehow an interaction with that group is part of it. I don't know, but thought off the top of my head. But I, I think it's something worth looking into. This is a problem I've heard from many, many residents of three years I've been on council, and I'd like to see if maybe we can do something.
Good. Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga?
Just to follow up with Mayor Person Hamilton shared, as I forgot to mention also, and I shared it last week, my own neighborhood, we do have some residents who are currently pursuing conversation with the city around doing a traffic study, around doing a speed hump or speed bump. So I would definitely welcome further knowledge and insights to be able to also support residents around my neighborhood and other neighborhoods. A second quick thought is, I wonder if this could also be included in a community, community survey down the road? If there could be a question to kind of get also kind of wider input from the city around how different residents feel about it.
Mayor, certainly, we, we could include questions related to that in the survey. But I think what's more important is that we develop a program. Because right now, we don't really have a program whatsoever. The residents you're talking about may deal with the city engineer, but it's more of like an ad hoc situation. We don't really have an official policy to implement these things. And if we do move in that direction, I want to make sure we use the latest traffic engineering science in developing that program. And I think city council would need to approve that in the future.
Councilmember Hoderick?
I just wanted to mention that, you know, our city staff, we used to have a dedicated traffic engineer. And just, I'm being sensitive to the fact that that work is subsumed by, you know, other engineering entities within the city. As we have I-75 modernization going on, we have sound issues that residents were calling in about tonight. You know, there's a, there's a lot on that platter and not necessarily, you know, a breadth of resources to throw at it. So just being sensitive to, you know, what the priorities are. We'll be looking at our local roads as the modernization of I-75 starts to wind down, you know, what, what was the toll on our local roads? So, you know, I, I agree with Councilman, or Mayor Person Hamilton, that this is a concern we hear our residents have. And if we don't have a program, we probably need to have one. I do, I am sensitive to, you know, I don't know that we're saying that is the immediate priority over others. I think that sound barrier issue is, is a very important one. So I'm just, I just wanted to be sensitive to that and, and, and make sure that the rest of city council understood we used to really have a dedicated resource that could really look at this for us. And I miss that, quite frankly, as a resident. And this is one of those things that didn't get done along the way. So.
Thank you, Ellen. Council, uh, Mayor, City Manager Miller?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. To, to respond to that really quick is that our city engineer relies on OHM and their engineering staff now. We did have a dedicated traffic engineer on staff, which we haven't had for a decade. And the, the difference between, let's say, I-75 noise and speed humps is we have direct control over those speed humps. And the I-75, we're sort of an outside partner who our city engineer actually just happens to know all the parties and knows what's going on. But we don't have a direct influence in the decision. We're, we're just, we can voice our concerns and we know who to voice them to, but we don't, we don't have decision-making powers in that arena.
Good reminder. Is there, so is there consensus to have city manager begin working on a policy for speed humps and the like? Looks like it. Right. Obviously, you'll prioritize your time and your resources and we, we don't expect it tomorrow, but appreciate it. Any other comments on the reports this evening? Okay, next up is council comments. Does anybody have any council comments this evening? Mayor Person Hamilton?
I, I always try to advocate for our city clerk's office with the November 3rd election coming up in, what, six weeks? Our city clerk, Aileen Dixon, in her office has provided a plethora of options for Troy residents to exercise their right to vote. The first, over the last week, overseas and military ballots were sent out. And this week on Thursday at 8:00 AM is the first day you can come and pick up your absentee ballot in person at the city clerk's office. And you can do that until 4:00 PM the day before the election, November 2nd. Also, this weekend, Saturday and Sunday, our city clerk is providing a drive-through absentee ballot pickup option as well. If you've already sent in your application to request an absentee ballot or you want to do it there, you can come to City Hall from noon till 4:00 PM on Saturday, on this Saturday and this Sunday, and pick up your absentee ballot, vote it if you want it, or take it home with you if you want. And you can avoid the mail completely if you're worried about the postal service issues we've been having. You can pick up your ballot and you can come back and drop it off at the drop box anytime until 8:00 PM on Election Day on November 3rd. And then, and you can also get your ballot mailed to you, as always. Every Troy resident can, without an excuse, can request an absentee ballot. And still, all 31 precincts in Troy will be open on November 3rd from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM as usual. They will have masks, they will have sanitizer, they will make sure everything goes safely. But I would recommend, and I this weekend planned to exercise my right to vote absentee, avoiding the mail. And I recommend everyone do that as well. There'll also be many drive-through clerk events throughout the next few, six weeks as well. On a few Wednesdays, on a few Saturdays, you can check the city clerk's schedule for that on the city website, troymi.gov. And I just want to thank the clerk's office for all the hard work they've done in the August election and all the hard work they're going to do. We also always need volunteers, not volunteers, but we need election workers. It's a paid position. And we're always looking for more for both, both the absentee counting board and for precinct workers on Election Day.
Thank you, Mayor Person Hamilton. Summarized that election process of the city of Troy pretty well. What do you think, City Clerk Dixon? Did he leave anything out?
He can work for me anytime.
He's got, that was a PSA by Mayor Person David Hamilton on your right to vote in the November 3rd election.
If I have a one-year-old, I might be able to work, but not this.
Is there an election coming up? I didn't realize. Any other council comments this evening? Councilmember Erickson Galt?
Thank you, Mayor. A few of us had the opportunity last Friday to attend the retirement of officer, the retirement party celebration for Officer Sean Morris. And not only was it a pleasure to meet Officer Morse, but it was a unique opportunity to get to talk to some of our police officers. There's certainly some of the hardest-working people in Troy, and they're very much appreciated. If you want to see how much Troy police, Troy residents appreciate the police department, just go and check their Facebook posts and see all the comments that follow. And, but it was also, especially Councilmember Brooks and I talked at length with some of the police officers about some of the frustrations and difficulties they have in their jobs. And it was just a wonderful opportunity to have that one-on-one that we don't often get. You know, no, no offense at all to our police chief, but he gives us the general overview and sometimes it's good to get the nitty-gritty from the people that are out there on the streets, so to speak. So again, congratulations to Officer Morse on your retirement and thank you to the officers who are willing to talk to us.
Good comment, good plan. Just to Good comment, good point. Just to remind you, that was a socially-distanced outdoor event. So that was, don't want anyone to think that we're having big parties inside. But as a quick follow-up to that, Officer Morris and I talked a little bit. And he made a comment that really struck me. He said he always considered his job as a Troy police officer as a guardian and not a warrior. And I thought that that mindset was very, very telling of our Troy police officers and how much they value this community and how they take their jobs and how they look at their minds, their mindset for their jobs as police officers in the city of Troy. So we do have great guardians here in the city of Troy and we're very proud of them and we, we offer our support. And we wish Officer Morris best of luck in his retirement. Councilmember Chamberlain Kranga, I think I saw your hand go up around the same time as Anne's.
Yes, also, I'll try to be brief. I heard from a couple of former colleagues from Global Troy who were very appreciative of the Welcoming League proclamation. So just want to thank everyone for that. They were very, very moved by it. Also, just wanted to briefly also just call out the, the very important proclamation around Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. And I just want to thank residents, I actually don't, I've not fully met them, but at residents who live at 3449 Beach Road. It's along my running route in the morning. And they also made me aware that September is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month as I run by their, their home. And briefly had an interchange at one point with, with the gentleman who lived there and just thanked him for commemorating the month. It is a service and an act of service to remember and to call others to remember. So I thank you, I thank him and his family for helping me to remember and to learn about this important month.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any additional council comments this evening? My final council comment is just again, a thank you to all the residents who weighed in this week on the Aquatic Center. Whether you called in tonight, whether you emailed, whether you posted on Facebook or Nextdoor or any other social media. We are driven by your community response and your engagement. And it means the world to us that you showed how much you care about this valuable asset in our, in our city. So thank you again for all of you did that. And again, a special thanks to our healthcare heroes, frontline responders and frontline workers who have kept us safe throughout this pandemic and have worked so hard when others haven't been able to. So if there's no further comments, we have no closed session this evening. This meeting will be adjourned. Good night, everybody.